I'm calling to honor this meeting of the Silver City Town Council. Would you please join us in the Fledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Thank you and like to welcome everybody here tonight. It's good to see a good turnout. The next item on the agenda is changes to the agenda. Do any of the councils want to make any changes to the agenda? The next item is proclamations. And since October 21 through 28, 2018, is Fire Prevention Week, the town of Silver City would like to recognize this with a proclamation, which we will present to our fire chief if he will come up to the podium. Whereas, the town of Silver City is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Silver City. And whereas, fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at the greatest risk from fire. Whereas, home fires killed 2,735 people in the United States in 2016, according to the National Fire Protection Association. And fire departments in the United States responded to 352,000 home fires, and the majority of U.S. fire deaths, four out of five, occur at home each year. And whereas, Silver City's residents should identify places in their homes where fires can start and eliminate those hazards. And whereas, working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half, and Silver City's residents should install smoke alarms in every sleeping room, outside each separate sleeping area, and on every level of the home. And whereas, Silver City residents should listen for the sound of the smoke alarm, and when it sounds, respond by going outside immediately to the designated meeting place. And whereas, Silver City's residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas, Silver City's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas, the 2018 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Look, Listen, Learn, Be Aware: Fire Can Happen Anywhere," effectively serves to remind us that we need to take personal steps to increase our safety from fire. Now therefore, I can let the mayor of the town of Silver City do hereby proclaim October 21 through 27, 2018, as Fire Prevention Week 2018 in Silver City. And I urge all of the citizens of Silver City to be aware of their surroundings, look for available ways out in the event of a fire or other emergency, respond when the smoke alarm sounds by exiting the building immediately, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of the Silver City Fire Department during Fire Prevention Week 2018. Chief, would you like to make a few comments?
Sure. If you do that math real quick, that is a home fire about 86 seconds every day, all year long. On average, seven people die in the United States in residential home fires. As the mayor stated, four out of five deaths occur at home. Most households thought that they would have in upwards of six minutes to evacuate. With today's construction and materials and processes, more than likely, it is two minutes or less for an evacuation. So the Silver City Fire Department will be proceeding with assisting the citizens, not just school-aged children this year, creating evacuation plans and teaching individuals how to practice these. I know we have a full agenda tonight, so I'm going to shorten this. We feel that we need to do a better job teaching people, and the citizens, and the residents, and the school-aged children, and their parents, about the potentially lifesaving difference having an escape plan and practicing it can make for their safety. So, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council.
Thank you, Chief Lambert. And thanks to all the members of the Silver City Fire Department and first responders for all of the good things that you do for our community and providing safety for our community members. We appreciate it. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is council comments. Councilor Beddison?
Thank you, Mayor. I was informed today by the Community Development Department, thank you very much, for letting me know that the Mountain View Apartments has put up a sign at the intersection of 180 and 90, more towards the main entrance off Juniper, and since they've been closing Juniper for road work and for infrastructure work, just wanted to give out that phone number so that people who want to call and get updated information, find out about leasing options, all those sorts of things, it's (575) 388-1214. So once again, the Mountain View Apartment Complex for Senior Affordable Housing is[440.16][440.16](575) 388-1214. So if you have any questions, you can give them a call, and they'll give you as much information as they have. So thanks again to the folks at Community Development for letting me know about that. I also wanted to mention that we have some really wonderful events coming up at the Silver City Museum this weekend. On Friday, October 12th, from 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. at the museum itself, we have the opening of Allen Hauser, renowned 20th-century Warm Springs Chiricahua Apache artist. And this is a pretty fabulous exhibit that I footbought, and I hope that you are able to attend. Unfortunately, I can't be in two places at once, so I will miss this wonderful event and the one on Saturday, but I wanted to mention the second one on Saturday, which goes along with the exhibit. On Saturday, October 13th, from 1:30 p.m. to 2:30 p.m., in the Silver City Museum Annex, there will be talk about the Fort Sill-Chiricahua Warm Springs Apache, past, present, and future, by the Fort Sill Apache Tribal Chairman Jeff Hassel. And I think I said the name wrong, but that's as close as I could get to understand. They kept trying to tell me how to say it, so I'm not very good. It's a different spelling, but I have met him before, and he's an incredible person, and so I think that that would be a really great way to understand how the Apache were here, but then their reservation is up at Fort Sill, Oklahoma. So I hope that those of you that can't attend do. I know that the Silver City Museum Annex is a little bit small, so you might want to get there early to get a seat, because at some point, they'll have to say that that's too crowded for people to get in. So, once again, that's on Saturday from 1:30 p.m. to 2:30 p.m. at the Silver City Annex. I want to thank the Silver City Grand County Visitor Center staff. They've done a wonderful job of inviting people that have come into the visitor center, letting them know that the university museum has opened to the public as of yesterday. We're open Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. We are closed weekends and university holidays and closures as we continue to update exhibits and as we continue to have some, the contractors fix some items. So, I don't know how long that will go on. It may not be until the winter that we open seven days a week, but right now, we're trying to figure out when we can do that. And I wanted to say congratulations to Mr. Benjamin Fisher of the Silver City Daily Press on his new position in Iowa, in Dubuque, as a political reporter. And I am not going to say the name of the paper, because I've screwed it up at least three times talking with him. And I'm sure that if anybody wants to know, they can ask Ben. He'll be leaving us. We will miss you and your wife, Andra. But good luck and safe journey. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilor Connor?
Thank you, Mayor. The first thing is just for those of you who probably noticed that I did not stand up during the Pledge of Allegiance. It's not because I don't want to. It's because I again have a cast on my foot and I'm not able to stand at this point, so I have my wheelchair, and that's why I didn't stand up. I'm not protesting anything. That's it. The next thing is I've been getting a lot of complaints about the way the people that work for TLC drive on PA Road. Several people have been forced off the road by those, I guess they're employees, but those contractors. The first thing I just want to say is that it's not a project, it's the town project, it's a Department of Transportation project, so unfortunately, they're the ones that are in charge of the project. But I was hoping maybe Mr. Brown would know who they need to contact if they want to complain, because there's some serious complaints.
Contact the Department of Transportation, I can't remember the name of the person, but the district engineer is Trent Doolittle. His office will take care of it.
Thank you. And me?
Okay.
Thank you. And I also wanted to congratulate Mr. Fisher on his new position. Iowa's gain is definitely our community's loss. I've appreciated the way you have covered our meetings. Sometimes you've been very exact in your quotes, and I've been like, oh, I didn't say that, but I think yes, I did. And so that's something I'm definitely going to miss. So, good luck, and good luck to Andra too, as well, in her position.
Councilor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I will not pick on you tonight, and good luck. There are two bond issues coming up, and one is proposed by the county. And the county is repealing our taxes that we're being paid for, are paying for. This bond issue is going to be used, according to a person I talked to today, hopefully for road structure in the county roads. Of course, it's going to affect the Silver City residents, so you can make up your mind if you want to vote for it or not vote for it. Another bond issue is going to come up here in November, and it's going to be for the higher education. And I hope you people don't vote for it, because we are tired of paying taxes for higher education and higher education. I think that we have to do some sort of bond issue to improve our roads, not just in Fort Sill, but here in Silver and Grand County. I'm tired of paying taxes, and so are you. And there's got to be an end to it. Somewhere along the line, we have to say no. So hopefully, the two guys will take that into consideration. I had the opportunity to go to the Western New Mexico Concert for Homecoming, and they had the Eagles to be there. And for those of you guys that didn't show up, it was a very good concert, and there was a lot of old people like me. And you should have seen us jumping up and down. And with that, one more thing. God bless America. Thank you.
Councilor Ray? Any other comments from the council? Oh, Councilor Amy Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just two quick comments. First of all, Ben, I want you to notice that we've developed a really long agenda to keep you here tonight, so go for it. And the other thing, I just want to do a shout-out to the youth mural program. I went to the dedication of the mural at the visitor center today, which is just astonishingly beautiful. It's been in progress for the last five years, and I just want to acknowledge all of the volunteers and all of the folks who've worked on so many hours in such a creative way to make our community more beautiful.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council? Very good. And we will go to item six, which is approval of minutes of the September 11, 2018 regular meeting. Do I hear a motion? Councilor Amy Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting of the town of Silver City of September 11, 2018.
The motion, is there a second?
A second, thank you, Mayor. A second motion is stated.
Those in favor, is any discussion? Those in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is public input. By looking at the sign-up sheet, I see that a number of people have signed up for the item under the NOI on the B ordinance. So what I'd like to do there is postpone that input until we actually get to that agenda item. So with that in mind, I see some topics here that falls outside of that. The first one was Jack Laio. You'll come up to the podium, and there's a button there that you need to turn on, so we can hear you.
(speaking in a foreign language) Hello, my name is Jack Laio. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilors, and staff members. My name is Jack Laio, once again. My tribe is Zini, my clans's are Eagle and Child of Badu. I am president of the Native American Organization at Western New Mexico University. On behalf of the Native American students who participate there, we would like to invite you to the first-ever Aztecan Flower Festival held in Silver City on Saturday, October 20th, from 2:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. Culture Kitzel, goddess of flowers, will appear in downtown Silver City accompanied by flower-song poets who will walk with her in the block from Marcus Street to Arizona and then back to the museum where she will disappear. Because this is a cultural celebration and not a religious ceremony, photos of the goddess will be allowed, but she will not speak. She is a goddess after all. She will be accompanied by flower-song poets who will set 500-year-old poems at various locations along the walk, one of which you have in your invitation. The public is also invited to observe, and auditions will be held for anyone who wants to become a sorrow-flown poet. Flowers are being posted in town, and people can contact the Native American Student Organization on campus for any more information. We hope this celebration illuminates some of New Mexico's indigenous history and also highlights the contemporary connections between Mesoamerican cultures and Native Americans. We have flower-song schools for the council and staff, and also for members of the public tonight, and everyone is welcomed. Again, it will be on Saturday, October 20th, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. in the downtown blocks between Fans' Gallery, Vickers Eater, the Havener, Tranquil Birds, Copperwell, Lewis Duffy's Hips, Riotless Weeding, and Luray Hotel, and the Silver City, New Mexico. We hope to see you there at 8:00.
Thank you very much. Mr. Martine Miller signed up, but you didn't put a topic, or are you here for the base or some other? Okay, so, next on the agenda then, is reports. Oh, Martine, if you would like to come up. Did you have some comments to make?
I think there were two other public comments that were not coordinated, and I thought it was. I was waiting for one. I was asking if you could put the input.
I had you down for reports. Did you want to make a comment other than reports?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I believe that there were two people at the bottom of the public comment list. One on Nathan Newcomer, and I was going to make a public comment too, I think for under new business. Is that, do you want us to do that now?
Sure.
Okay. Great, thank you. I'm Allison, to be the executive director of the Gila Conservation Coalition, and I'd like to provide public comment tonight on the agenda item regarding the Holloman Air Force Base proposal to expand its special-use airspace for training of F-16 fighter pilots over Silver City, the Gila National Forest, and Gila and Alba Leopold Wilderness Areas. Encompassing the nation's first wilderness area and New Mexico's last wild river, the Gila region attracts retirees, outdoor recreation, and tourism from throughout the U.S. and internationally. An expanding Holloman's F-16 training area will significantly degrade the rural character and quiet solitude of this unique area, impacting real estate values, outdoor recreation, tourism, and the local economy. The human, wildlife, and environmental impacts of this proposal could be severe. The extreme noise from low-elevation training maneuvers can be frightening and disruptive to humans, livestock, and wildlife. And additionally, Holloman's proposal requests use of chaff and flares, 15,000 of each annually for aircraft defense. And these radar interference systems introduce aluminum, plastic fibers, and magnesium into the environment with potential impacts to water quality and wildlife, and increased risk of wildfire. We believe that the Gila region is an inappropriate location for F-16 pilot training, and there's a long list of people who also oppose F-16 training over the Gila. 2,300 signatures were submitted to the Air Force last November, and another 1,000 people have signed the petition in opposition to this alternative referred to as Alternative Two. More than 150 businesses have signed a letter in opposition to Alternative Two. The Grant County Commission passed a resolution outlining its concerns with Alternative Two and requesting that the Air Force use other proposed and existing areas for Holloman's training. Also, Senator Martin Heinrich wrote an op-ed in the Silver City Daily Press describing his concerns with the Holloman proposal on that the Gila is an inappropriate area for F-16 training. We encourage you to approve tonight the letter to the Air Force that communicates the town council's opposition to Alternative Two. Thank you.
Thank you. The other comments on the Wild and Scenic River, I'll save until we get to that agenda item. The next item on the agenda is reports. Under 8A is the First Annual State of the Watershed Report by Allison Civic, Executive Director of the Gila Resources Information Project.
Okay, here we go again. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm Allison Civic, Executive Director of the Gila Resources Information Project, and with me tonight is Dave Mancy, Quality Assurance Officer and Technical Advisor for the Silver City Watershed Keepers. Thank you for the opportunity to talk with you about the First Annual State of the Watershed Report produced by the Watershed Keepers, and you should each have a copy of this at your place. Before we talk about the report, first let me tell you about the Watershed Keepers. We're a volunteer environmental quality monitoring and stewardship program coordinated by the Gila Resources Information Project, or GRIP. And we were formed in 2010 through a partnership between the New Mexico Environment Department, Town of Silver City, the Trails and Open Space Committee, and the former Gila Conservation Education Center. We now also partner with WNMU, Alba Leopold Charter School, and the Community Service Building, which is Gary Staley's group. We organized this program in response to the Environment Department's request for a citizen-based watershed stewardship group that could take on more regular water quality monitoring and restoration projects for San Jacinto Creek and the Silver City Watershed. And NMEDE, or the New Mexico Environment Department, monitors the water quality of San Jacinto Creek once every seven to 10 years. And Watershed Keepers, working with the Alba Leopold Charter School eco-monitors and our volunteers, we're able to conduct water quality monitoring every quarter. So we're able to track on a much more regular basis what's happening in San Jacinto Creek and alert the Environment Department if we pick up any measurements above water quality standards so that they can investigate and resolve problems if necessary. The Watershed Keepers also have implemented a range of stewardship projects, and several are highlighted in the State of the Watershed Report that you have before you. We completed a trash cleanup and illegal dumping prevention project with the town's Community Development Department, the Opportunity High School, and Community Service Building. We did that during the school year and finished that up this summer. Special thank you to Jamie Embek for a great partnership in getting that project completed. Together, we distributed hundreds of brochures and aired more than 700 radio spots on how to prevent illegal dumping. So I also want to mention that the Watershed Keepers helped facilitate cleanup of the San Jacinto Creek tailings that were washing toxic metals into the creek, and we've done educational projects like Storm Dream Labeling, the Storm Chasers, Big Ditch Day, and World Water Day. So this is the first State of the Watershed Report for our community. Similar to the annual drinking water report issued by the town's Utilities Department, the State of the Watershed Report communicates annual water quality information for San Jacinto Creek, so surface water. The report also provides an update to our community on restoration, stewardship, and educational projects going on in the watershed. And we hope to make the report more comprehensive in the future to highlight the work of all of the many groups working in the watershed. So we think this can be a great tool to engage people, recruit volunteers for projects like the town's new Toss No Moss Campaign, or Trails and Open Space Projects, and others. So with that introduction, I'm going to let Dave, our Silver City Watershed Keepers' Technical Advisor and Quality Assurance Officer, give you more details about the State of the Watershed.
I got into this 10 years ago, almost 10 years ago, because San Jacinto Creek offered a unique opportunity for public outreach and education, which fell right along the lines of the work I was doing then. And over the decade or so, we trained a lot of students on how to do water quality monitoring. A couple qualifiers. We do not test for everything that the Environment Department does. We test for some basics that we can afford to do. Generally, we test and monitor things that are related to the physical, the chemical, and the biological properties of the water. Physical things are like how much water is flowing through the creek, how big the ditch is in terms of dimensions, and what the gradient is. We also do chemical tests in which we determine the difference, or the amount of suspended solids versus dissolved solids, which is a big part of water quality. We also look at some biological properties of the water. So our look at it is limited, but we definitely look at several items that are covered under state standards for that particular creek right there. The data shows that for the most part, the stream's in pretty good shape. We occasionally have some dissolved oxygen problems towards the upper reach, which affects fish, but it becomes well-ariated as it goes downstream. It does support a small population of fish. We also have occasionally had some exceedances of the E. coli standard. E. coli's a problem anywhere you go. There's a lot of sources for E. coli, birds, other types of animals, pet whales, things like that. When we do see an exceedance of the state standard for a single grab sample in the creek based upon the use, the designated use by the state, we notify them, and they come and they double-check on that stuff for us. So, water quality and water chemistry, the biology of riparian areas and aquatic areas is very complex, and that's about as brief an explanation as I can give you. And if you want anything more in detail, I'd be happy to talk to you guys about that. Do you have any questions? Thank you all very much.
I just wanted to make one final comment. We distributed 500 copies of the report there around town at coffee shops. We're getting, those are all gone at this point. I'm getting 200 more printed, but it's also available electronically at gilaresources.info and silvercity.com. and silvercitywatershedkeepers.org. Thank you very much for your time this evening. I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda in the reports is the Fiscal Year 2019 Tourism Marketing Plan, Griffin and Associates. Mr. Brown?
Mr. Mayor, Council. Mr. Brown, are you going to do the introduction?
What?
You hear any kind of doubt? Good to be here. Good to be here. Good, good to go. Johnny Griffin and I'm Dave Haydock. And to Mr. Fisher, I'd like to say I've been to Dubuque, Iowa, and I was judging the advertising awards there one year, so good luck there. I know he's going to miss us in Silver City. While Dubuque is beautiful, Silver City's got him beat, so, but good luck. I know you'll love it. Johnny and I have been in advertising for over 36 years in New Mexico. And as a matter of fact, we were here with Governor Gary Johnson back in the 90s on the Toss No Moss program. You just heard about getting the state picked up of the litter. I also worked with Scott Nichols and his dealerships. And so we have a big career and a long career here in New Mexico, and we're proud to be awarded the advertising contract for FY19 for Silver City so that we can bring what we've learned over the years to help Silver City put heads in beds and to bring lodgers' tax up and to let tourists experience and explore and understand what we love here in Silver City. Over the years, we've enjoyed our experience in New Mexico. We've been involved in quite a few organizations here in New Mexico. And so today, we'd like to just kind of take you through kind of the introduction of our marketing plan. You have the detailed one with you in your packets.
Let me just talk briefly on travel trends that we're seeing. While tourists and travelers come in all shapes and sizes, and we certainly welcome everybody with open arms to Silver City, what you're seeing here are some of the trends that we're seeing nationally and certainly in the state. So people want unique experiences. People want nature. People want to have an experience like nowhere else. They want to go home from a trip and be able to brag to their friends about what they just did, what they saw. They want sustainable experiences. They want a slightly crazy story, and they want thrills. How do people book? And I think we can just look at ourselves in this room. Eighty-two percent of all travelers currently booked on mobile websites or on websites, and more and more people are booking travel right from their phones. So of that, 42% of all of the trips are being booked on someone's phone. Eighty percent are last minute. So a lot of people book in advance, but more and more we're seeing people last minute going, oh, wow, it's a great weekend. What do we want to do? Let's go hiking. Let's go check out the art shows that you were talking about that are happening in Silver City, and they're booking later, which is frustrating for those of us that are having events and want to fill them. Sixty-four percent of all travel is by women. Fifty-nine percent is booked one to three months prior to people taking a trip. The up-and-coming demographics, Dave and I are both boomers, but for the first time ever in history, the millennials are surpassing boomers on booking travel. So there's probably some millennials in the room. Gen Z is the generation behind the millennials, and Gen X are the generation ahead of millennials. So it's not to say we don't want to keep reaching boomers, but these are the up-and-coming markets. And other trends that we're seeing is solo female travelers, and then the LGBTQ community. So those are all opportunities as we move forward.
You know, it's this kind of research and data that helps us as we move forward and create advertising and direct the advertising to those that were most likely to want to hear the message and want to come to New Mexico. I've worked over the 36 years of the number of cabinet secretaries here in the state of New Mexico, and I must say some pretty darn good ones. But when Monique Jacobson came to the Department of Tourism, she was the first cabinet secretary that was the right person for the right job. She's from New Mexico, got a great education, and she worked for PepsiCo for about 10 years, so she got what branding was all about, and she understood how to build a brand. And that's what we're now experiencing here in New Mexico, is the New Mexico True Brand. And I always love to play this video of Monique when she first came in because it really kind of sets the tone of why we do what we do. And so we'll play that for you.
Hopefully.
Hopefully.
I mean, travel with this computer. See if you can get it.
Maybe we won't.
You don't want to see our imitation of Monique Jacobson. Much cuter.
It doesn't look like it's going to play. Okay.
So we'll go into some of the statistics.
Monique, as you may now know, is Secretary of Children, Youth, and Families, and that's a tough job and doing a good job. Some of the key things that Monique did for us here in the state of New Mexico, she created focus groups, and the focus groups kind of told her the information of what people cared about New Mexico. One, we're not a Disneyland. You know, we're not Chicago or New York, but we're truly a state that has adventures steeped in culture. That's the brand essence. Everything that Monique designed was around those three words. Yeah, we have adventure like Colorado, they have mountains, we have mountains, so does Arizona. But what those two states do not have is the culture that we have in New Mexico. And Johnny and I work with a number of communities, villages and cities here in New Mexico. Every one of them can ladder up to adventure steeped in culture. All of our communities have key assets that address that, and we in Silver City pretty much own the adventure steeped in culture. So it's with that motivation that drives us creatively to provide the creative, to push forward with our messaging to the right target. As I said, we don't want people that are looking for the Disneyland experience. We want those that are looking for what we have here in Silver City. Speaks the true brand to the authentic experience, the outdoor activities, and the adventures that people can have when they come. Right now, the department's spending about $11.3 million out there inviting people to come to our state. When Monique took the job, she told our legislators, at the time we're getting $2.2 million, she told them, I don't want any more of the money. Let me show you what I can do with $2.2. And true to form, every year, Monique came back to the legislature with proof and data that showed what it's doing for our state of New Mexico. And today, we now get $11.2 million in advertising, just inviting people to come, adventure steeped in culture and experience out here in New Mexico. So when she does that, or the department now does that under Cabinet Secretary Latham, we come right behind that $11.2 and say, Silver City has the true adventure for you. So it's the multiplier effect that happens in advertising that so makes it much more powerful when we line up the message that lines up with what that $11.2 has been telling people of what we can get here in New Mexico. The governor just recently, last couple of months, went out and said, well, what's it doing for us? These are the numbers. They continue to be record-breaking numbers for us. Jobs are up. I think the last time I saw a report, you know, tourism, that is hospitality jobs, were now the number two performing job performance for us in New Mexico because of what tourism does for our state. You know, oil and gas, price of gas goes up, it comes down, so you can never understand where that's going to be. But in advertising, all you have to do is ask people to come visit us, and the proof's in the pudding. People are coming to see us, and more people are traveling to our state of New Mexico.
So we can get the next slide? Okay. All right, so in your marketing plan, I just wanted to give some highlights of what our goals are for fiscal year 2019. This began on July 1st. So we want to increase lodger's tax revenue by 3% or more with first time and repeat travelers, and we will be measuring that based on the town's monthly lodger's tax reports, which is a metric that is consistent with the travel statistics we're seeing nationally. So nationally, they're seeing about 2.8%, so we round it up to 3%. Of course, we are very willing to have that number be much higher. We're going to craft and place news stories quarterly. We feel this is really important because despite that people say they don't believe what's in the media, they absolutely believe what's in the media. So while we can get positive news stories on Silver City, all the fabulous things there are to do here, the quaintness of the town, the outdoor activities, the great art shows, the great unique festivals, and that is placed in a newspaper article, or on a TV show, or on a web blog, that has a whole other level of credibility that advertising doesn't have. So we will be working on those quarterly, and we want to showcase the New Mexico True approved creative to our primary and secondary demographics. Come on, slide. There we go. So, and I just to give a quick overview of those demographics, and this is based on the research that the previous ad agencies have done. So our primary demographic are people 35 and older with household incomes of $35,000 and up, and their interests include history, culture, art, food, hiking, rock climbing, and the other outdoor adventures. And then the secondary demographic are people 45 plus with households incomes $60,000 and up, and their interests are outdoors, fishing, hunting, and the RVers. And then because we don't have a limitless budget, we need to be strategic in which areas of the country we're going to be marketing to. So tying in with what the tourism department is, we're going to be focusing on Albuquerque, Phoenix, El Paso, Colorado Springs, military bases both in El Paso and Albuquerque. And then of course, with the news coverage going out to the rest of the nation. How we'll do that is with the news coverage, which we call public relations or earned media, print advertising, digital and social media advertising, Pandora with both video and audio ads. We'll be updating and reproducing the visitor's guide. We are developing video and photo assets. In fact, there was a photo and video shoot here last week, and last weekend, so a few days ago, and leveraging New Mexico True Branding and the tourism brand that the town has already secured and paid for.
Yeah, I just, I just might mention, you know, Johnny was talking about our demographic and geographic. Behavior's also a big thing that we can do, and we talked about how much travelers use these. Today, with digital advertising, I can put messages out to people in those key markets that we're going after that are interested in rock climbing, interested in unique shopping that we have here in Silver City, or unique outdoor experiences like we have around Silver City. So I can direct messages directly to them, and then I can track it. I can see how many people did actually pay attention to it whenever they left. I can also follow them and send a new message. So the world that we live in today, in the marketing ecosystem, is somewhat complex, but it's much more targeted than we've ever had the pleasure in my years of doing marketing to the ability to reach them. This is just the marketing timeline. This is kind of a punch list of what deliverables and things we're going to be doing through the next 12 months. And with that, I will stand for any questions that the council may have.
Questions or comments? Councilwoman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I noticed that in your target markets, you did not include Tucson. Tucson has been the largest gateway flow here to Silver City, so do you think that you just, we don't need to market, or what?
No, I should have said B.A. slash Tucson.
Hmm?
I should have said B.A. slash Tucson.
Oh, so it should have been in there, okay.
Absolutely.
So it's two big cities in Arizona.
Correct.
Yeah, we might have used that little 93 that's been so good to Silver City, so yes, that's correct. But we think we can expand into Phoenix, much more than you ever have before, because that's a population of what, 9 million people?
It's a huge metropolitan, only five hours away.
Yeah, exactly. So with this digital, I think it gives us the opportunity to have the budget to go after those folks in Phoenix. We've been doing this successfully with Riedoso and Roswell, with the Fly-Roswell program, because there's direct flights out of Roswell and Phoenix. And so it works really nice. Yes, Phoenix is a good market as well as Tucson.
And one thing I was going to say, the tourism department is actively in the Phoenix marketplace. So as part of the tourism grant, we do have digital ads in the Phoenix Sky Harbor or Airport. And I don't know if anybody has seen those, when you go to, oh, thanks for my heart thing. I was in DFW last week and saw the huge New Mexico True exhibit. So we will be participating with that, with Visit Silver City in the Phoenix Sky Harbor, as well as the El Paso Airport and the Albuquerque Airport. Yeah, thank you for, I'm sorry that I didn't catch that, but we will fix that in the report. Phoenix slash Tucson.
Okay, I've got one more question. And as you talk about these earned media A-level stories.
Yes.
So the story that came out in the Washington Post two days ago about how Silver City should be your Silver Anniversary Destination, would that be an example?
Yes, so A-levels is any publication or media outlet that has at least a half a million impressions, whether it's a print publication, or online, or TV. So yes.
Okay, so as a, you know, a previous researcher, do you have a really good sense of how those stories get generated?
Yes, right, people like me, we pitch all day long.
You pitch all day long.
So one of the things we'll be doing is working with the town, coming up with the unique pitches, and then sending it into the media, and then following up with pitching. It really is diving for news stories.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
You know, it might happen with Tony, that's her forte. In the day's world of marketing, it's no longer just send a press release to the Dallas News, but you work with writers that have the interest of what our story's about, and then those writers feed all the publications around the country. And so that's the beauty of that side of the PR base.
And one other thing with earned media, because of its prominence and its believability, we can then put that out in electronic newsletters, we put that out on the website, put that out on social media, and it just keeps churning. So one news hit is not just one news hit. If we do it well, it will be hundreds of thousands of news hits.
Councilwoman Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. The presentation that you sent us in our file has nine pictures in it. In those nine pictures, there is exactly one that has a person that is visibly a person of color in it. That's a problem for me. This community is 50% Hispanic, so the advertisement needs to show that. You're talking about authentic experience, so I'm hoping that this is going to be something that can be changed because it needs to be authentic. People need to know what they're coming to when they get here and not be surprised that there's Mexicans here.
Absolutely. And we have just begun the contract, so those photos are photos that were done by the previous contractor, that is what we currently have in our database. We just finished a photo shoot this past weekend. We have another one scheduled in January, so duly noted, you can count on us to make sure that happens.
Going along with that also, something that's happened in the past, so I'm just throwing it out there so that it doesn't happen again, is having Anglos dressed up as any culture is not acceptable either. Thank you.
Can you, hang on, you said Anglos dressed up?
Anglos dressed up to celebrate Dia de los Muertos, as Native Americans, as anything that they are not is not going to be appropriate either.
Absolutely. We want authentic experiences. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I just had one question. You said that one of the things that would be emphasized would be the culture. What do you, expand on that a little bit? What kind of culture are you talking about specifically?
Well, the rich arts culture would be the first thing that I would look at, and the history of Silver City is amazing, and people need to understand all that is here. So it's looking at culture from the biggest standpoint of everything that's available. So we'll be looking at the events that are happening, the various long-term families that have been here, the sights to see, the food, and food is a cultural experience. So all the things that people can see, touch, feel, experience, share, brag about, that's what we want to promote.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hang on. Councilwoman Wright?
I'm not reading my number.
Yes, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
If you were to ask for people about history of Silver City, who would you ask? Would you ask if people have been here a long time, people that have been here a short time? That's one of the questions I would like to answer, if possible. And not just Silver City, but Grant County?
Yeah, Grant County for sure. What we look at there is, is we're looking to tell a story, truth about storytelling. And everything we do and what we see, we hope there's a connection to what we do. So when we come to storytelling, we usually look for those that can resonate, those kinds of stories, so that we can tell that to travelers. And that can be various folks in the community, from those of you that are our fathers, family fathers, or rooming fathers, to those that are maybe on the downtown district, maybe those that are out on the ranches, out in the country, out in the county. So we look for people that can help tell a story. Thank you.
So and the last thing, I think it's really important, is we are looking to reach people outside of the area, to have them come here and experience it as a visitor. And I look at tourism and economic development very closely related because most people, before they choose to move to a place, come as a visitor first. So tourism is our first entree to people. Hopefully, they fall in love with it. They decide they want to move here. They decide they may want to open their business here. They may want to have a second branch here. So they work very closely together, and that's really where we want to look at, is helping the entire region grow, tourism being our entry point.
And Mr. Mayor, I might add to what Johnny just said. Cabinet Secretary Latham, in the latest research they did from Longwood, they're finding that the New Mexico True Brand is actually... the New Mexico True brand is actually doing what Joni just said. In research, they asked if people would locate here or bring their business here, the numbers were indicating very high. Right now, our firm's involved in El Magorno here, working on how we extend the true brand into the community. And it's all about come for the adventure, stay for life. Because just as Joni said, if you like what we like here in Silver City, you're going to love to bring your family here and your business here. And so it's finding like minds that like what we like.
Thank you all again.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is a report by Mr. Bruce Ashburn to explain the new P and M policy regarding the trimming of trees to maintain power line clearance. And this come about because in the past, P and M comes into a neighborhood and begins to trim the trees, and some of the people in the neighborhood were really concerned with how all of that was happening. So I met with Bruce, and he actually went to his supervisors and got approval to implement a new policy. Can you explain that to us?
Absolutely. Before we get started on that, I just want to say, I think I'm ready to take a vacation. You're in Mexico, of course, but nonetheless, Mayor, councilors, I do appreciate a couple of minutes tonight to speak to you about something that's very important to many people in our, in our community, and that's trees. Obviously, the electric company and trees have some issues. Electricity and trees are not a good mix. So why do we trim trees? In a word, safety. Very often, the trees that grow under the power lines are very easy to climb and could be accessible to almost any child. Transportation lines at the top of the poles are nine hundred times more powerful than the socket that you would plug a utility into, or an appliance into. Touching that, those lines in a rounded manner is almost assured death. Inside the trees is basically dirty water or sap. The sap is a great conductor for electricity. If leaves and needles come in contact with the wires, the electricity will try to go to the ground from inside the tree. If it's raining hard enough on the outside, and the leaves or the needles are in the power lines, water can poke the tree and potentially make the ground electrified, and anyone standing around that area could be seriously hurt, including first responders. At the very least, contact can cause arcing, and arcing can cause a fire situation that's equally dangerous. I find it quite ironic that I would be talking to you tonight at the time when you had a proclamation about Fire Safety Week, because trimming the trees is definitely part of keeping our community safe. Last, but certainly not least, is the possibility of interruption of service. The power line at the top of the poles is a backbone feeder and serves anywhere from five hundred to two thousand customers, depending on where it's at. Trees interfering with the power lines is one of the leading causes of power interruptions, brownouts, and difficulties as we go through what we do. So one of the major things that we need to discuss tonight is why we cut the trees in the V shape. This is called directional or natural pruning. It's the pruning practice recommended by the American National Standards Institute, and that's A N S I A three hundred, if you want to check it out. The limbs that are interfering with the power line are trimmed back to the parent branch, and that's done for the health of the tree so that no stubs or dead wood is left at the pruning area. This allows as much of the green area, the leaves, to stay on the tree and keeps the potential for fungal infections to a minimum. There's a greater safety risk when the tree is rounded over the top. This option damages the tree by removing its root source and leaves hazardous studs that will either die or respout with weakly attached limbs. So where have we dropped the ball as a company? Please know that we really don't want to trim trees. Only trees that have the potential of causing issues to the system are ever trimmed. In the past, we have not made a concerted effort to communicate when and why trees would be trimmed. Going forward, our tree trimmers have been instructed to attempt a face-to-face contact with the customers approximately one to two weeks before they would trim in that area in all the areas to be trimmed. If that's unsuccessful, they've been provided with door hangers to leave that will have information regarding the nature of the work that must be done. Inside this door hanger, which I've provided for all of you, is, it'll be filled out with information and a contact number so that any resident with a problem can contact the tree trimmers directly. Another thing that, I know some people don't like the way that the trees look. I've also been in contact with the tree trimmers, and they are, we are willing to take a tree down if that's what the resident wants, instead of having it look the way that it does. I do want to thank Mayor Ladner for bringing this to my attention and for working with me to try to move this into a different place. And I really appreciate all of you guys for having the community meetings that you have and bringing these things to life. I do believe that communication is going to solve ninety percent of the issue. We are willing, as I said, to, if residents require, to remove a tree if that suits the situation the best. That's completely up to the resident, and now we can communicate the situation much more freely. So I stand for questions.
Questions, comments?
Thank you.
Thank you. You take, Councilwoman Wright?
Mr. Bruce, is there any possible way that you could send out a notice to all the property owners by mail? That way they could say that they got it by mail, not by the newspaper? Because a lot of people don't come to me, and a lot of people don't bother to do things like that.
So let me reiterate, so that everybody understands, okay? The policy going forward from tonight is that a face-to-face contact with anyone who's going to have a tree, that has a tree that would cause issue, will be made, okay? Will be attempted, I should say. If we can't make that contact face-to-face, this door hanger will be left on their door, and they can call us directly, okay? So there's not going to be newspapers, there's not going to be anything going forward. This is face-to-face, okay? Thank you.
Any other, Councilwoman Edison?
I just want to thank you for taking the proactive steps to make sure that our community members know what is going on. And I think that working together with the mayor and the city to do this with P and M to make sure that folks know what's going on, this really increases communication and is a very good step forward for everyone. So thank you.
Anything else? Okay, Mr. Governor?
I just have one question for you.
Yes, sir.
On your poles, you have pole agreements with cable companies and others. Have you delegated any of your authority to trim trees to them? Do they have authority to trim a tree?
Okay, the way that it's set up is that P and M is the only people that are going to access those power lines above the cable and other joint use users. We don't, the power lines are so dangerous, we want trained people up there dealing with those lines. However, the other people do have the capability of going in and trimming, as long as it's not in those, those areas.
I'm going to, probably if I'm wrong, but not all of the poles that have lines on them are owned by P and M.
That is correct.
Correct. So there's going to be instances, instances where Comcast or CenturyLink actually own the pole. So they may be in there trimming a tree, but that's because they own the pole, not P and M. So just to be clear, there are going to be times when there are other companies will be in there other than P and M. So if there are problems, we just need to make sure that we communicate very clearly with P and M and what pole where exactly, so that we can make sure it's clear and find out who has, who's dealing with the issue.
Councilwoman Edison?
So, Mr. Brown, I guess one of the things that I would wonder is if there's some way that we can suggest to the other pole owners that they follow suit with what P and M is doing.
Yes, we can do that. If you can send me that, your policy in writing, all requests from the other utilities.
Absolutely.
Something like it.
Then that way, everyone's a good neighbor. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Thank you, Mr. Ashburn.
Thank you very much.
Next item is staff reports. Mr. Brown, do you have a staff report?
No, there's just one, and it's short. As required by the state from D F A, we have to have it included in the minutes that our budget was approved by D F A for fiscal year two thousand nineteen, and it just has to be reflected in the minutes. And there were no stipulations or anything, so it's just an open approval.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Brown? Okay, I've had a request to take a short break, so we will take a ten-minute break.
I think we have to make an announcement.
You have a motion to take a break.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move for a short break.
Do we have a second? Who's in favor, Z A?
Aye.
We'll take a ten-minute break. Tell them our meeting back order. Next item is number nine, public hearing. This is the approval slash disapproval of ordinance number twelve seventy-three, a request for a zone change, number Z C eighteen dash zero-two, for a tract of land from a residential A district to historic downtown commercial district for a portion of College Avenue, generally between Pope Street and Cooper Street, tracts of land described as lots one through sixteen of block one seventy-seven of the Fraser survey of the town of Silver City. Lots one through sixteen of block one seventy-six of the Fraser survey of the town of Silver City. Lots one through sixteen of block one seventy-five of the Fraser survey of the town of Silver City. Fraser Block two oh one, Lot two, and Lot four, and Lot six. C E N, center, fifty-foot Lot two. T T, Hart, Lot four, or Lot six, zero point one three three, A C. Fraser Block two oh one, Lot two, and Lot four, and Lot six. Coordinates E forty-five minutes, Lot two, east forty-five minutes, of south thirty minutes, and E twenty-seven minutes of north twenty minutes. Lot four, E twenty-seven minutes, Lot six point one twenty-six, A C. Soul and separate, Fraser Block two oh one, Lot two, and Lot four, west fifty-five minutes. Lot two, south fourteen point four minutes, of west fifty-five minutes. Lot forty point zero eight one, A C. Fraser Block two oh two, Lot one through Lot six. E forty-one point thirty-two minutes. Lot two, E forty-one point thirty-two minutes, of south forty-three minutes, and east twenty-six point four minutes, of north seven minutes. Lot four, E twenty-six point four minutes. Lot six point six five oh, A C. Fraser Block two oh two, Lot two and Lot four, Hart, Lot two, Hart, Lot four, point two two zero, A C. The applicant is the town of Silver City. The hearing will be conducted as follows. The town council will serve as the hearing board, and I, as mayor, will be the presiding officer. The town staff shall present a brief synopsis of the application based on the application or actions taken below. Then the proponent of the application shall present his or her case. Next will come witnesses in support of the proponent's case. The proponent, staff, or witnesses may then be questioned by the hearing board. The presiding officer will then ask the proponent if that concludes his/her case in chief, and will state that the proponent and his or her witness shall remain available to be further questioned by the hearing board or by opponents to the application slash applicant, to the appeal slash application. Following the close of the proponent's case, witnesses, witnesses in opposition to the proponent's case shall be permitted to testify, during the course of which the witnesses may address questions to any previous witness, but such questions shall be made through the presiding officer. The presiding officer shall have the sole discretion and direct them the question for response, considering whether the question is relevant, is cumulative to other testimony, or is otherwise inappropriate. Have any members of this hearing board had any exporté discussions with any person regarding the subject matter of this hearing, or had any communications from any party to this case? There being none. Because my wife has property that may be affected by the decision of the council, I am declaring a conflict of interest and will not vote nor participate in the discussions relative to the issue. Will all parties and witnesses intending to testify, including those staff members who intend to present testimony, who will be available, or who will be available for questioning, please rise to be sworn in by the town clerk. If you have not been sworn, you will not be permitted to testify or otherwise participate Yeah, please come up to the podium.
I have a couple of you that haven't signed on our little sign-up sheet, so if you would, your name and address, please. If you can testify, please sign. I state your name. I solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony I'm about to give in the manner before this council is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth under penalty of perjury.
Thank you. Who will present the application for the hearing board's consideration? And I also make note that the application is made part of this record. Will you please identify yourself?
There's a lot of on the planet that are coming to the city.
Please proceed.
Okay, this is Z C eighteen dash zero-two. It's an amendment to official zoning map from residential A to historic downtown commercial for a portion of College Street in the town of Silver City. Two property owners in the proposed zone change area approached the community development department because their commercial properties are zoned as residential A. It was determined that the majority of the properties in the proposed zone change are commercial properties, and would benefit from a zone change to historic downtown commercial. Property owners in the proposed zone change area were contacted, and they offered opportunities to participate in the proposed zone change. The owners of the affected parcels have indicated their support for this request. The community development department presented the staff report to the planning and zoning commission, and it was made part of the record. Staff recommended to approve the zone change request based on four findings being met, and the planning and zoning commission voted not to approve. Testimony brought up by the planning and zoning commission included an area, an increase in traffic, traffic safety, walkability, noise, and different use changes. However, none of the testimony made by the planning and zoning commission was supported by traffic studies or walkability studies, and there is no anticipated change from what exists today. So this is the map of the proposed zone change area. As you can see, it's the As you can see, it's the north portion of College and the south portion of College from Pope Street down to Cooper. This is the College Street Plaza, which is one of the properties that's included. This is also one-ten, one-fourteen, and one-sixteen West College Avenue. The Grinder Mill is at four oh three West College. The American Legion Hall, four oh nine West College. We have the Bright Funeral Home at two oh one West College. And then this property at nine oh two Santa Rita Street. We have Smith Real Estate, five oh five West College Avenue. And the Silver City Public Library, which is by fifteen West College Avenue. When the planning and zoning commission makes its recommendation to the town council, when the town council makes the final decision, they shall at a minimum make at least one of the following findings. The proposed amendment is in substantial compliance with the town's comprehensive plan. The proposed amendment will not adversely affect the implementation of the goals and policies of the town's comprehensive plan. The proposed amendment is justified in order to correct a mistake in the town's comprehensive plan, an error in assumptions about the properties, surrounding uses, population forecasts, rate of land consumption, or other factors. The proposed amendment will not adversely affect, will not adversely impact the public health, safety, or general welfare, and will promote the original purposes of the land use code. The proposed amendment responds to changed conditions, such as changes in assumption in capital investments, road locations, population trends, land committed to development, density, use, or further studies that have been completed since adoption of the land use code. The proposed amendment is necessary in order to respond to state and/or federal legislation. The proposed amendment provides additional flexibility in meeting the objections of this land use code without lowering the standards of the land use code. In the opinion of the community development department, that this zone change may be approved based on the following findings. Number one, the proposed amendment is in substantial compliance with the town's comprehensive plan. Success of infill development depends upon the town's creating conditions that encourages more and better development within the town. A successful infill strategy will support the creation of livable neighborhoods and communities. The proposed amendment will not adversely affect the implementation of the goals and policies of the town's comprehensive plan. Implementation measures C Development Regulations zoning page three dash twenty-four out of the comprehensive plan states, "The town should coordinate land use and community design, transportation, and economic development." The town's development regulations should reflect this integrated approach to planning, ensuring all new development has a beneficial influence on the quality of life to improve future opportunities for the community. The zoning map should be updated to reflect all categories and current uses. The proposed amendment will not adversely affect, will not adversely impact the public health, safety, or general welfare, and will promote the original purposes of the land use code. This proposed change will stay aligned with the particular purposes of the land use code, specifically purpose one point three point five, which states to encourage a more efficient use of land and public services, and to reflect changes in technology of land development. The proposed amendment provides additional flexibility in meeting the objections of this land use code without lowering the standards of the land use code. This change will not adversely impact adjoining properties because it will not allow for a substantial use change, but will match the uses which currently exist. For example, a body shop or vehicle repair would not be allowed, and the proposed change as it is in having commercial. I do have a letter from one of the other property owners that wasn't able to be here. So I'll read that. It says, "City Council, I'm not able to attend the council meeting, but I support the area of being rezoned to be either historic downtown commercial or mixed use rather than residential A. I am remodeling my property at one-ten West College Avenue to live there as my home, but I prefer zoning categories that provide more flexibility if I ever decide to create a business there." Roham Stikes with the letter. Any questions?
Any questions from the council? Does the applicant have any witnesses to speak in support of the application? Any others?
There's a few of the property owners that are in the proposed zone change that want to speak.
Please come up and identify yourself and speak directly into the microphone.
All right, I'm Bruce Kenny, and I've been asked to, by some of the other property owners, to make a general presentation, and then others will speak about their property in particular, and I will speak about my property. So the proposal is to change from residential A to downtown historic commercial. Residential A is primarily for single-family houses. It also allows duplexes, schools, assisted living, and family childcare, and it conditionally allows apartments up to ten units, childcare centers, libraries, museums, churches, police or fire stations, art galleries, bed and breakfasts up to four rooms. Conditional use, as you probably already know, means that there's a public hearing to determine whether a use should be allowed. Now, there are ten buildings in this area, and some amount of ten are non-conforming. So I was gonna, I don't know if you can see this cursor, but I'm gonna point to where the different buildings are, and probably you all know where they are anyway. So this first building is College Street Plaza, and that's the one that I own, and it is an office building, non-conforming to residential A. The next building over is the Grinder Mill, and it's a restaurant, non-conforming to residential A. And the next building over is the American Legion Hall. It's a club slash not, lodge, non-conforming to residential A. Smith Real Estate is here, and it's an office building, non-conforming to residential A. Then the next building over is the library, and it is conditional use in residential A. But there was no conditional use hearing when it was created, but it's grandfathered now. Then the next building is the Red Brick Mansion. It has been an apartment building of less than ten units, which is a conditional use in residential A. It's also twice been an office building, which is non-conforming to residential A. It's not clear whether it is grandfathered and imso to what. And then the next is the funeral home, and that's also non-conforming to residential A. And then there are three houses right here, and they are all, as far as I can tell, being used is homes, which is conforming to residential A. But the center one, should be right in here, has been, or was recently, not too long ago, a, an art gallery, which is a conditional use in residential A. But again, there was no conditional use hearing, although it was changed to an art gallery while our land use code was in, in use. Now, I unfortunately did not attend, and none of the proponents, in fact, did attend the DNC hearing, which was a big mistake on our part. But I did watch the video of it, which you have on the website, and so I know kind of what they said at that meeting. And at that meeting, they were arguing that, that the, this area should remain residential A, and they wanted to use variances to prevent, prevent undesirable uses, but they would agree with, they wouldn't oppose variances that had reasonable uses. So that was their way that they wanted to protect them, themselves, from uses that would, that would interfere with their property. But the land use code is specific. You shouldn't zone by variance. Section six point three point one nine A says, "A variance allows a building or structure to be built if strict enforcement of the land use code will result in practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships for the applicant, and that by granting the variance, the spirit of the land use code will be observed, public safety and welfare secured, and substantial justice done. Under no conditions shall a variance permit a use that is not otherwise permitted in the zone districts where the property is located." So variances are for minor differences from the zoning way. If the setback is required to be fifteen feet, but for some good reason, you can make it ten feet or something. But it's not for the opposite of zoning. Downtown historic commercial is the opposite of residential A. Residential A is the most restricted code, while downtown historic commercial is the least restricted. There's not much that isn't permitted downtown. If the majority of a property area, as this is, is grandfathered, then it probably has the wrong zoning, and that's, that's the case here. Residential A doesn't match the reality of this area. It should never have been assigned residential A. Yet opponents have some valid concerns about undesirable neighbors. The land use code addresses this kind of concern through conditional uses rather than through variances. Many of the uses opponents fear are allowed in this, in downtown historic commercial, but are conditional in mixed use. And so I can't really speak for the opponents. They're, at least one of them is gonna speak for themselves, but I think they should be arguing for mixed use rather than residential A. And now, just for a second, let me explain my vision of how mixed use should be used, and that is that downtown and along the highways should be commercial, and then the, the arterials coming off that should radiate out, and parts of them, especially right next to the commercial, should be mixed use, and they're leading into, to residential districts. Now that isn't a vision that's necessarily shared by the community development department, and I would encourage you to ask them what their vision is, which I'm not sure quite, but they, they're, they chose, when I, when they talked to me about this, I suggested mixed use, and they felt that, that downtown historic commercial would be more appropriate. And that's what was proposed, and it was proposed by the town, not by the residents. So then I'm gonna go on to talk about, oh, and, and let me step back the section, the section. When I talk about arterials, I'm talking about parts of, of places like College Street, Twelfth Street, Market, Cooper, and so on, that are mixed already, parts of them are sort of mixed, they have some businesses, and they have some, some houses. Now, the other point I want to make is that residential A creates financial hardships for the three buildings that are for sale in this area. And those buildings are College Street Plaza, and the red brick two-story former mansion there that is on the corner of Santa Rita and College, and the, the funeral home. And I'm gonna speak about College Street Plaza because I'm the owner. What happens if someone wants to buy it? Well, a buyer might use College Street as offices. That's the opposite of residential A, but it's okay because it's grandfathered. So there would be no problem under residential A. They might want to convert College Street to about twenty apartments or senior housing. Residential A doesn't allow that. Downtown commercial does allow that, and mixed use does not allow that. So it would be a hardship for me if I had to turn away a buyer who wanted to buy the building. The third thing they might do is convert College Street back to fourteen apartments in the back and offices in the front. That was the historic use until nineteen ninety-five, and some of you may remember the forest service in the front of the building. Under residential A, that's not permitted. Under downtown historic, it is permitted, and then it's conditional use under mixed use. And I'm confident that neighbors and the town would approve a change to that, to that use. So the next building that's for sale is, is the one that's right here, that's the Red Brick Mansion. And it's unclear, to me at least, whether it's grandfathered as an office building or an apartment building. But it has been used as an office building. It was built in nineteen, nineteen oh seven as a single-family resident for a very large family, apparently, that people just don't use buildings that big, even if they can afford it, generally don't want to live in a house that big. So, but it's, the likely use is conditional, is questionable under residential A. And the funeral home is the one that would create the greatest financial hardship because it can only be sold as a funeral home under residential A. And the Bites can tell you why this is a hardship, they're here tonight. And there's similar problems for all the other buildings, or most of the other buildings. The Grinder Mill is leased from the American Legion. If the restaurant owners retired, most uses would be blocked under residential A. If the owner of Smith Veroli retired, it could only remain as offices, and most other uses are blocked under the current zoning, and the owner is here, and she can speak about that. Then when I was on the library board about eight years ago, we were talking about building a new library. Remember that one? When there was discussion of having a, we actually apparently had some money at that time, you know? But there was talk of, of building a new library, and we got around to the discussion of what would happen to the old building. Well, almost all the, the uses, potential uses of that building would be blocked under residential A, and the town would be in the same boat with the rest of us with a building that's hard to sell. And, and then speaking on the, the three homes that are, you know, right in this area, the owners of those, and you heard Roham Stikes' is, is letter, but I, I believe that the other owners have said something similar, is that they own a house on an arterial, and if they wanted to convert it to a business, it would be more flexible for them to have mixed use or downtown commercial, and so they favored this zoning change. Now, if we looked at other uses for some of these buildings that they were able to change, some of the more interesting uses are a restaurant without alcohol. It's not allowed under residential A, but it is under, under historic downtown or mixed use. A restaurant with alcohol is not allowed under residential A, but it is under historic downtown, but it's conditional use under mixed use. But alcohol is controlled more by the liquor control board than by zoning, and you can't put a bar- can't put a bar across from a church, uh, under those regulations, I believe. Um, uh, the, the, um, use that was cited most by opponents at the PNC meeting is pest control. Pest control is not allowed under Residential A, but it is allowed under Downtown Historic and it's conditional under Mixed Use, which I think conditional means it would be forbidden because all the neighbors would obviously oppose that. But it's also disallowed under common sense because nobody wants to buy that two-story mansion to put a, um, a pest control company so they can park their van in front of the building. That's the same thing, another use that they considered is, or, uh, discussed was theater slash dance hall dash pool, pool hall, another use that's, uh, not allowed under Residential A, allowed under Downtown Historic and conditional under Mixed Use. But again, not likely to actually happen because that building doesn't have a dance floor or a theater and the pool hall that was here about eighteen years ago, when I moved here last year for only two months, or went out of business. So many of the concerns are theoretical rather than real, but we do sometimes have people who own businesses that aren't really very realistic. Now, just in conclusion, Residential A is one for this area. It shouldn't be on a business area on an arterial. Historic Downtown Commercial will probably work, but has some unrestricted uses that scare neighbors. Mixed Use provides more protection for neighbors and would be a good compromise, in my opinion. I prefer Historic Downtown, uh, Commercial for College Street Plaza and what I would, my first choice would be that you would just expand the historic to include my building and, uh, then I think that would, that if you made the rest Mixed Use, that would, that would be probably better for all the rest and for, for the neighbors. But I'm also okay with either Downtown Historic or Mixed Use for the whole area, but I do strongly just, uh, object to keeping it as Residential A.
Thank you, Mr. McKenney. Does the applicant have any other witnesses to speak in support?
Mr. Mayor, do you have any questions?
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. McKenney, we might have a few questions for you here. Council of Edison?
Mr. McKenney, I have a question because presently before us is the, my understanding this is either Historic, um, Commercial, Historic District Commercial or retain it as Residential A, but you brought in Mixed Use, so I don't think that we can make that decision. Am I correct? Mr. Scabron?
I think that you can, but you might have problems with, uh, it may have to go back to P and Z.
That's what I thought.
Because the people that were noticed.
Were noticed on the other.
Were noticed on a particular change. Now you're changing what you might do. I believe the land use code does give you flexibility to come up with compromise, but I think the best practice would be to send it back to P and Z if you wanted to, or change the application. Ask the applicant if he's willing, if the applicant in the town is willing to, uh, amend or change their application. Now, I've talked with, uh, with, uh, our community development director, or actually with Priscilla, and they're, they're aware of all the options. They're aware of the arguments that Mr. McKenney is making and yet they've come to you with a particular recommendation, so I would either vote up, down, or remand it.
Well, the, the reason for the question is, is I was gonna specifically address to Mr. McKenney, that given the way the request is right now, are you in support of, not just for your particular one, but for the area being Historic District Commercial? I mean, I was really confused by your presentation because this is a, this, this is an application for considering, um, before the town council, the Historic District Commercial.
See, would have been appropriate to make that argument that Mr. McKenney's making now.
At the P and Z.
At the P and Z meeting that he did not attend.
Yes, that's, that's, that's right, and I, I agree with that, that, that it's your decision tonight whether to make, uh, Historic, uh, Downtown to accept that. And, um, I would sort of moderately argue in favor of that. Uh, that would be acceptable to me, but if, if you found the arguments against it convincing, it would be all right to me, with me to remand it and try again.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Smith?
No, that was my question.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. Priscilla, do you have any other witnesses to speak in support? Yeah, Mr. Mayor. Would you stand in front of the microphone and would you identify yourself, please?
Okay. Mr. Mayor and Council. I am Harry Bright. This is my wife. I have Bright Funeral Home and I have the big three stories they're talking about. Uh, they had, my funeral home was built in nineteen forty-eight and it is, it always been a funeral home. I think it's time that we get right and it needs to be zoned Commercial. I have reached the point in my life that I need to retire and you would help me tremendously if you will rezone that. I've had people look at it and say, "I don't need this until something's done." Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Priscilla, do you have any other witnesses to speak in support?
Good evening. My name is Becky Smith-Lanner and I'm one of the property owners and this section proposed to be zoned Commercial. And I'm also a realtor involved in trying to sell Bruce's building and the Bright's building, so kind of got a triple thing going on here. But I can tell you that, um, it, it is definitely a hardship on the Brights and also on Mr. McKenney to try to sell commercial properties that have the wrong zoning under them. And I see this action as more of a, just a long, needed correction in zoning. As I understand it, Silver City didn't even get zoning until about nineteen sixty-five and how this area became Residential A from the beginning is kind of a mystery because all of these same buildings were already there and they were already being used for things that weren't Residential A uses. So whether it was a mistake or something that got left out or something political, we'll never know, but I think it's a good time to, to just set it straight and make the zoning conform with the uses that are already going on. And whether it is, um, Downtown Commercial, which makes sense in many ways, or whether it is Mixed Use, I think that makes sense in some ways too. I think all of us would be happy with any of those, but Residential A is definitely not acceptable anymore. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you. Any other witnesses to speak in support? Priscilla, does that conclude your case in chief? The applicant witnesses in support shall remain available to be further questioned by the hearing board or by opponents to the application. Are there any persons who wish to testify in opposition to this application? Please come forward and state your name.
I think it's an opposition statement. I just wanted to give a little perspective.
You speak in, into the microphone. Thank you.
My name is Marcia Stow and, uh, Dale Holzley and I live at, um, on Santa Rita Street. And I want to say I understand and, uh, what our neighbors and businesses, um, have said and appreciate that. I just wanted to give a little bit of a perspective and I liked a lot of what Bruce said because, um, I think there could be, it'd just be nice if there were like a win-win solution instead of just one or the other. And so, um, that's what I was gonna point out a few things on and, um, and I'm gonna go over, this is like an update to our letter, uh, sent to the August Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. And as we understand it, it was recommended that the rezoning proposal be rejected during that August meeting based on comments received. And, um, and I guess, um, I'd like to just point out our perspective. Although the rezoning proposal does not include our property specifically, it includes, um, Commercial Historic District zoning in an L shape around our property. And because our home and yard would almost be surrounded by this zoning in very close proximity, including three to four feet from some of our rooms, the bottom line is that it is essentially like being within Commercial Historic District zoning. And that really does concern us, um, because it has a potential for some impacting things. We're at home most of the time while gardening and enjoying the yard and porch. Silver uses allowed in a proposed zoning would impact our day-to-day life and it's just, I don't know, you know, when we moved to Silver City, we were specifically looking for a historic house within Residential A zoning. And we bought in this neighborhood in good faith, having no idea there would, would be zoning change proposals. Um, and we wanted to live within convenient walking distance to the Historic Downtown businesses, business core, but knew that living downtown within such commercial zoning or immediately adjacent to it would not work for us. And so we live on Santa Rita Street, which is a highly residential neighborhood and it is within one of the existing Town Historic Residential Districts, the North Edition Historic District, but not the Downtown Silver City Historic District. And already has the protections and benefits that Historic Districts afford, which we appreciate. Um, it was not part of Downtown Central Business Core historically and we question whether it fits real well with the definition of Commercial Historic zoning. Um, as we understand it, according to the report analysis, for this zoning proposal references Section 3.1.6 Land Use Code definition of the Historic Downtown Commercial District. And that is, the Historic Downtown Commercial District zoning is intended to accommodate a mix of commercial uses serving residents and visitors, Mixed Use Buildings and Residential Buildings in the Historic Central Business Core and to provide a variety of building sizes compatible with the character of the Silver City Historic District. And given that, we don't think it makes sense to belate or potentially change building size or other characteristics so that they are compatible with the character of the Silver City Historic District when some of the proposed area is within the North Edition Historic District and not the Silver City Historic District. Um, and that includes the north side of College Street in this proposal, while the North Edition was and is highly residential and presumably had and still has some other distinctions from the Downtown Historic District. Weighing building sizes to the Historic Downtown District in some cases might make it more incompatible or perfectly changing to the neighborhood's designated Historic District, the North Edition. And the definition of Commercial HD also states the district encourages a high level of vitality through diverse activities conveniently accessible to pedestrians. And of course, the Historic Downtown is already convenient to pedestrians in this general area and we don't see how non-residential development or more of it would make it easier or safer to walk in this area. In fact, when we're walking back from Downtown, we usually avoid the section of College Street where businesses have, uh, busy parking lots, feeling safer to walk by residences instead. And in terms of our neighborhood vitality, residents generally do improve and maintain their properties and hopefully that does not become impacted. These proposed zone changes make us, anyway, question whether we want to continue making property improvements to our historic home. Um, and the changes as proposed would mean that some potentially impacting uses for such a residential neighborhood are allowed according to Commercial HD zoning. And some of these have been mentioned. I don't need to go over all of it. Uh, some examples include, you know, pool halls, entertainment, commercial parking, uh, pest control and more. Neighbors would have, especially when it's surrounded by it almost, neighbors would have no ability to comment on such allowed uses. Some allowed and conditional uses could substantially increase potential impacts or could potentially increase noise in the neighborhood, while some could increase use of major night lighting that disturbs neighbors, to mention just a few potential impacts. Some drive-through functions could affect the area. Um, one of the examples used in the report justifying this proposed change is that adjacent properties will not be impacted because substantial use changes such as a body shop or vehicle repair shop would still not be allowed. However, auto mechanical repair is a conditional use within Commercial HD as are things such as indoor and outdoor manufacturing and production. And it's reselling work to be enacted to that zoning. We have no idea what the use would be in five months, five or ten years. And, um, but although above that, we fully understand the need to maintain and use buildings and are particularly interested in seeing historic structures preserved and greatly appreciate the Historic Business Core. We walk downtown numerous times a week to dine, watch a movie, or shop. And, uh, the area targeted by this zoning, however, is not the Historic Business Core. Um, I just want to point this out. We have heard it stated that lack of adequate parking. We limit development of uses that could impact such a residential neighborhood and thus we should not be concerned. But then we look out the door and see how haphazard parking really is. That signs of certain activities or additional businesses or uses in the immediate vicinity. Sometimes cars are parked up the middle of the street. Other times, some folks have parallel park while others simultaneously use pull-in angle parking next to each other. When this appears it's difficult to see the safely back out of the driveway, and this was a potential safety concern. Based on our experience, unfortunately, we would have to be naive to think that parking would potentially limit impact, such impacting uses in the area. Um, we used to frequently find used cigarettes tossed on the boulevard in front of our house, primarily from parked cars. That was a concern particularly relative to vegetation during drier times of the year. We saw this as a potential safety concern during times of increased non-residential uses within this residential neighborhood. And we have read in the ordinance that the proposed amendment will not adversely impact the public health, safety, or general welfare and will promote the original purpose of the land use code. Based on our experience, including some of the safety concerns just mentioned, we think it is much more likely that such a zone change as proposed could increase the likelihood of impacting safety and general welfare of neighboring residents. Um, let's get that. So just to summarize, I guess, there's a number of uses within Commercial HD that are quite compatible right next to Residential A zoning, such as bed and breakfast establishments, also doable in Residential A up to a good number of units, and other household living uses. And we also think the current business closest to us is totally compatible. The problem is that Commercial HD allows uses even without input that are not compatible and instead impacting the residents living and instead impacting the residents living nearby. And we're simply asking that, when there is a proposal to expand commercial zoning along College Street into residential zone neighborhoods, then it's reasonable to do this in a compatible way that will not impact the residents in highly residential neighborhoods. And regarding the zoning proposal, we are only asking that a win-win strategy could hopefully be applied rather than a one-sided approach which inflicts ongoing concern or impacts to one party or one group, I don't know who it is. We think that this is a reasonable and fair request. For example, would there be a way to come up with, well, come up with a way to more officially ensure that commercial use of a property will be a compatible use relative to the adjacent residential neighbors in residential A zoning? Perhaps with creation of a buffer or transition zone or some other method. And I think that's close to what Boo was pointing out. In fact, I think that part of the definition of mixed-use zoning includes the concept of transition between commercial and non-residential neighborhoods. It points that out, that's part of it. Or by initiating neighborhood plans, as included in the Town Comprehensive Plan on page 322. And that states, "All plans offer the best way for area residents to consider future development in their area in a comprehensive way and to resolve major concerns regarding individual development proposals in an equitable manner." That's well stated. And then, there's, I'm sure, probably some other options. But just wanted to give another perspective, and it does mean a lot to us. And thanks for the chance, Boo.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilor Benison, Mr. Smith?
Laura, I have a question for you. So, are you opposed to the commercial historic downtown?
Being expanded to that area?
To what area? To the entire area that is under consideration or just to the north side? Could you please explain more further?
Well, I think it's more, yeah. It's not necessarily either or. I definitely would see something else be done on the north side at a minimum. I can't speak completely for the south side. I know there were people here at the zoning meeting, and I don't know what they said because I was out of town. But more inappropriate on the north side for a number of reasons, because it is more residential right there. There are currently things that have been, you know, are used as residence there too. And also because it's in a different, it's in a different historic district, and the commercial HD zoning applies a different historic district characteristics to, you know, to something that's in a different historic district, the North Edition. It's probably has different characteristics, but it's the impacts, the potential impacts in the commercial HD to a highly residential area, especially when you're almost surrounded by it.
Okay. But it's not to the whole area, it's to a very restricted part, is that, that's my understanding. But I do have a question.
More than.
So, are you stating in what you had read that you are, I want to ask this question, are you opposed to mixed use for the north? Or are you opposed to changing it from residential A? I need to know which.
I would like to see a win-win, and I think the mixed use has a lot of that built into it, so I wouldn't be opposed to that because then at least, you know, there's more ability for input for everybody. I see it as more of a win-win, yes, mixed use.
So, I guess, so ultimately, my question is, are you simply, completely opposed to changing the north side from residential A to anything?
I wouldn't have a problem, I don't think, with mixed use.
Just asking for my own verification. I just wanted to understand your opposition.
Any other questions? Thank you. Priscilla, are there any other persons who wish to testify in opposition to the application? Councilor Benison?
Yes, Priscilla, I have a question. And for the, for the community development department. Can you explain in a way that I can understand why commercial historic downtown is the application and not some sort of, you know, why that designation over mixed use, which I know that we have done before? So, if you could just, someone could explain either Priscilla or Jamie, why that particular designation over another one?
Yes, I'll take that question. Good evening, Mayor and Council. It was, you'll notice that in Pope Street up to the red is also commercial historic downtown. That is outside of the Silver City Historic District, it's in the North Edition also. And if we have one and a half blocks that are mixed use, that would technically be a spot zone. And also, the mortuary is an allowed use in the historic commercial, and it is a conditional use in the mixed use. And with the Brights being one of the people who needed this to happen, we looked at his property, and we're trying to avoid a spot zone. Our goal with the community development and the comprehensive plan was to look at the zoning map and correct these historical errors. I believe that the hall that's there was built in the 30s, it's almost a historic structure itself. So, when these districts were drawn, there has to be a line somewhere, and we're trying to correct historically what should have been included. This was also presented in 2011.
Continue.
So, my additional question is, could you please explain what the issue is with spot zoning?
Yes. So, when you look at our zoning map, our goal, my goal as the director, and as you've directed me in the comprehensive plan, is to create something that makes sense for the people that use it, for what exists. We have a very historic town, and we have one mixed-use area so far that was to allow an RV park that already existed. So, what I'm trying to do is look at what is on the ground, and unfortunately, I can't please everyone, so I tried to make my best correction of this zoning error that happened previously. And so, it's continuous with the historic commercial district that is north of the Silver City Edition. Ques is in there, the building where White Quest was is in there, and this will also include the glass story.
Okay. So, this for further explanation, once again, explain why we do not, or why you do not do spot zoning?
Because next week, somebody else may buy the property and want to do something else, and it just creates this continuous, there's really no point in having zoning if you can just change everything and there's no flow. So, this is one of my steps, trying to create the flow. College Avenue is also an avenue, the university is there, the walkability is important there. These buildings are already commercial. So, this was my decision, and I counsel Priscilla, this was my decision for the best flow of the zoning there.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Any other questions? Jamie, Priscilla, is there anything else that you wish to be reflected in the record?
No.
Okay, thank you. Is the hearing board prepared to consider this application and render its decision?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion? Councilman Hayman Smith?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, let me put my glasses on.
It's a long one. It's a long one. I move to approve of ordinance number 1273. A request for a zone change, number ZC18-02, for tract of land from the residential A district to historic downtown commercial district, for portion of College Avenue, generally between Pope Street and Cooper Street. Tracts of land described as lots 1 through 16 of block 177 of the Fraser survey of the town of Silver City. Lots 1 through 16 of block 176 of the Fraser survey of the town of Silver City. Lots 1 through 16 of block 175 of the Fraser survey of the town of Silver City. Fraser block 201, lot 2, and lot 4, and lot 6. 50 degrees, lot 2, point lot 4, point lot, 6.0133 AC. Fraser block 201, lot 2, and lot 4, and lot 6, east 45, lot 2. East 45 of South 30, and east 27 of North 20. Lot 4, east 27, lot 6, point 126 AC. Sole and separate, Fraser block 201, lot 2, and lot 4, west 55, lot 2. South 14.4 of west 55, lot 4, point, no, question, lot 4, 0.081 AC. Fraser block 202, lot 1 through lot 6, east 41.32. Lot 2, east 41.32 of South 43, and east 26.4 of North 7, lot 4. East 26.4, lot 6.650 AC. Fraser block 202, lot 2, and lot 4, point lot 4, point lot 4, point 220 AC. And the applicant is the town of Silver City. Recommendation by staff that the zone page, that the zone change be approved based on the following findings. The proposed amendment is in substantive compliance with the town's comprehensive plan. The proposed amendment will not adversely affect the implementation of the goals and policies of the town's comprehensive plan. The proposed amendment will not adversely impact the public health, safety, or general welfare, and will promote the original purposes of the land use code. And last, the proposed amendment provides additional flexibility in meeting the objectives of this land use code without lowering the standards of the land use code.
Thank you. Do I hear a second? Councilor Benison?
Thank you, Mayor. A second, Mr. Marshall, stated, but I don't have to say it over.
We have a motion. Hang on a second. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please, Ann.
Councilor Benison?
Aye.
Councilor Hayman Smith?
Aye.
Councilor Ray?
Aye.
Councilor Connor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, another short break.
We will have another short break. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, Boo for a short break.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, a second question.
In favor of a short break, and it will be 10 minutes, so please.
Aye.
Aye.
Call a meeting back to order. Next item on the agenda is number 10, unfinished business.
Mayor, can, we were supposed to do a report, under reports, can we get that done real quick?
Sure. Yes, absolutely. Go ahead.
Gary Staley's going to do a report on the territorial day event that we had at Capia Park, we forgot earlier.
Gary.
Mayor, my name is Gary Staley. My report's not near as exciting as what you just went through, but, Councilor Ray's district for the Charter Days was very successful. I believe I counted, we had 17 citizens. About half of those were youth from the community youth building program. Got some photos taken, got a little article in the paper before Mr. Fisher leaves, and it was just a great success. The youth and the adults did a really great job of cleaning up, doing a lot of weed trimming, a lot of downed dead material in the Capia Park. Capia Park runs all the way from Little Chapel in the hill, south below the Senior Center. And if you haven't been there, there's a nice trail system there. It was part of the Rome, and there was a lot of work done. Now, we have to look to the fire department to, for somebody to try to take care of those piles of downed debris and limbs. So, this was the last of the four Charter City volunteer days. And I know most of us haven't figured out what we're going to be for Halloween yet, but we need to be thinking about next year's, whether you want to continue this. I know I've been asked to be a part of the Charter Days.
We will, we will continue it.
Okay. So, by the Charter Days, February 16th, we would like four new dates for the coming year that we can put out and have you as councilors be selecting those projects within your district. And we hope to improve on this process every year. We've had varied successes this year, but in general, we will work on three parts, and then have a fun day in Councilor Hayman Smith's district, which was very successful also. So, I'll thank the town for their cooperation in this and giving our youth an opportunity to be involved. If you haven't seen Councilor Ray with a chainsaw, you're missing something. He is awesome.
Go ahead, Councilor.
Thank you. If you haven't seen James with a wood eater, if you haven't seen anything either. Thank you, guys. It was, it was great doing it. Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
It was a lot of fun. The kids, we actually used the grills that were there. They're not gas grills, but they're barbecue, we kept grills. And the youth actually cooked us a nice hamburger meal, so it was great. James, you better comment something there.
Mayor and Council, I just, I really want to thank Gary for, you know, we've had a year.
That's not what I was asking you to talk about.
I know it wasn't, so I'm not embarrassing you. It was a year of finding these events, and it, and it really does take some creativity at some, some points, as well as some, quite a bit of legwork. We go out and we visit these sites several times. And then, the kids that show up, they're, they're really great kids, and they work hard. Sometimes you got to poke them along, but they'll work hard, they follow direction very well, and they've, they've definitely made a difference in this town in the last year. So, just wanted to thank everybody for that, and really, really encourage in the coming year, if you belong to a social club or any type of organization, get out there, get your clubs involved, and we can, we can all make a much bigger dent when we have more people showing up. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Harry. And thanks, Mr. Brown, Mr. Marshall, for providing a lot of resources that we need when we do these projects. The first item under unfinished business is 10A, the approval slash disapproval of superseding notice of intent, number 1272, and ordinance amending chapter six, animals, article one, and adding a new section 6-15, keeping of honeybees of the code of ordinances of the town of Silver City. Councilor Hayman Smith, would you talk to this?
Do you want me to speak first, or do you want public input first?
No, I want you to speak first.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The purpose and intent of this ordinance concerning hobby beekeeping within the town of Silver City is to provide for the safe and orderly keeping of honeybees. of Silver City is to provide for the safe and orderly keeping of honeybees in this town. It's primarily directed towards protecting the safety, welfare, and quality of life of all the citizens of the town of Silver City. Now, I want to say here that the town council recognizes that many citizens are interested in hobby beekeeping, honeybeekeeping, for many reasons, including, but certainly not limited, to personal satisfaction of mastery of such a demanding hobby, the mental and emotional benefits of keeping bees, like Councilor Ray has reminded us, there are a variety of veterans who keep bees as a way for meditation and calm, resourcing their own local honey for personal use, and with good intentions by their own efforts to address the decline of honeybees and other pollinators. I do want to remind people that the town of Silver City, by virtue of proclamation, celebrated a bird, butterfly, and bee friendly community day this past year, that the town does not use neonicotinoid pesticides, that the town has a policy of periodically replacing ornamentals with native plants and native pollinators. So the town most acknowledges the importance of bees for our environment, for the health of the, health of the planet, and local food production. When working on this ordinance, I used information from a, from this NOI, I used information from a broad variety of sources. I looked at various academic and popular press papers on urban beekeeping. I looked at models of, of urban beekeeping from other municipalities, what those municipalities had done, including the most recent one that was passed just this last April in Alagorda. I used information from the conversation with the council in August, in which about two thirds of the people there identified themselves as local beekeepers. I had a very long conversation with Ryan Hiles, who was the chief state API, that means the bee guide, for five years. He stayed there, bee guide, now he's the bee guide boss. And I asked him for journal and specific advice on what to include in this NOI. And I also got some information from an entomologist at NMSU, because of the high level of antagonization going on here. So the town acknowledges that hobby honeybeekeeping must be done in a manner to provide safety and protection for the citizens of the town while assuring the safety for the bees. So this is a superseding NOI, and what that means is that the NOI that I introduced in August is gone. This notice of intent says that we are intending, if the council approves, to put forth an NOI for public comment and for review, and that it would be coming back at a future date in front of the council, provided the council agrees to move it forward to that. So here's what this superseded NOI has in it that's really a change. First, it has a requirement for registration permitting of API's. Now that means one or more honeybee hives. It has limits on honeybee hives based on property law clauses. It has requirements for how hives are placed on a lot, which means distance from boundary lines and how the hive, where the bees fly out are, are situated. It has requirements for highway barriers in areas, and it has requirements to not have a honeybee hive keeping within a hundred feet of a school, daycare, church, hospital, or park. It has a requirement for a sign, and I just want to pass around to my fellow councilors an example sign that our animal control officer has, she has a number of designs that are free and downloadable, so that people could just place a sign on their edge of their property. This was identified as being particularly of interest by people who I talked to who are allergic to bees. They would like to know when they're walking, if they're likely to be passing near an active hive, and if they choose, they can cross the street and maybe not walk that way. The notice of intent contains some hive management requirements, for example, calling for water source so that bees don't go looking for water and the neighbors' children's waiting pool. It has language about good practices for keeping an eye on honeybees, be alert to signals for potential swarming, of any unusual agitated and aggressive behavior, and to note any diseases. But these are currently practices of the honeybee keepers, so much better, because it means they're already being done, and therefore do not represent any extra burden on them. One of the requirements is recleaning every two years, and I've called out a specific European honeybee stock. I know that there are a variety of honeybee stocks. The purpose, the spirit here is to have honeybee stocks that are gentle and don't swarm so much. Now, this was one of the main points that the state API strongly suggested be in cleaning as a way of maintaining more gentle population of bees. A beekeeper should be able to provide an invoice to show that they purchased a particular European stock clean, and a recorded date of when they recleaned the hive. So this would be an easily documented example for enforcement. And last, local honeybee keepers, like folks perhaps who've been keeping honeybees for decades, who've had their API's in existence for a year or more, will be able to apply for variance for a few of the requirements. About, I don't know, eight to ten years ago, there was an ordinance, a lot of public discussion about requirements for keeping chickens within the town. If any of you remember that, you'll note, and if you've looked at the ordinance, you will note that there are actually similar language between the NOI requirements for honeykeeping, honeybeekeeping, and chickenkeeping in terms of density, placement, and good practices. Our animal control officer has a pile of reading on good practices of keeping honeybees. Using the NOI, she drafted a one-page permit application as an example of what would be required, and it would actually be a really very simple process. She would be the one who'd be visiting the local honeybee keepers and working with them on their permits. I want the public to acknowledge the efforts of the Grant County beekeepers in terms of public service through education regarding honey, honeybees, and the benefit of pollinators. But I do want to say that education of pollinator benefits cannot substitute for formal requirements of registration permitting and safety practices of a hobby where there is potential real danger, especially to people who are allergic. That is why this NOI is for the welfare of the greater community of Silver City and not reflecting the preferences of one particular interest group. I also want to note for the record that I've scheduled a conversation on October twenty-fourth at six P.M. in the town hall conference room, and I'll make sure that this is announced in a variety of calendars. The animal control officer, Vicki Tony, hopes to be there, and we should be able to discuss the processes for beekeepers, so that they, so that we're assured that it's actually a pretty simple process. I hope that this NOI will pass in the council, and that any change will assuage concerns of other citizens, that the town is taking reasonable steps for public welfare in Silver City. And I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Can you hold off on the motion until we have some public input?
Then I'd be happy to hold off on the motion.
Thank you. I know a lot of people have signed up for public input, and you have been very patient in waiting through a lot of business tonight, and as we did with the side-by-sides, I'm going to make sure that everybody who wants to will have a chance to speak to this issue either for or against. Some of you signed up, but I know that there were some still in line when we picked up the list, so if you aren't on the list, I will give you a chance to make some comments either for or against. According to town ordinance, public input is limited to five minutes, and the total length of time has a time limit, too. I do know that the first two people who signed up want to talk in tandem and take about seven minutes, so I will allow that. And then, after they're done, I'll ask for a show of hands of who else wants to speak, and then we'll set a time limit for that in order to finish our total time in, in the time we should. So speaking first will be Susan Claire and Susan Campbell, I think.
Good evening, Mayor Ladner and councilors. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you about superseding notice of intent twelve seventy-two. Councilors, as you vote on this NOI, I hope your hearts and minds will be focused on the long-term effects of your decision. That is how it will affect the ecology of our natural environment, and how the beneficial and imperil of honeybee will be recognized and appreciated as an essential pollinator to our food supply. The Grant County Beekeepers is a group of expert beekeepers with many decades of cumulative experience. This group seeks any opportunity to educate, assist in safe removals of swarms and infestations, and partner with other like-minded organizations for pollinator protection. The group has throughout two thousand and eighteen sought to collaborate with the town on honeybee education, selection of pollinator-friendly plants, and the Bee City USA program. I won't repeat the statements that Councilor Ammon Smith read about posting, excuse me, about who she consulted with other professionals and individuals, but she did post that on the Grant County Beekeepers website. But notably, the Grant County Beekeepers group was not contacted for its input or to collaborate on this ordinance. We were left out, even though members of this group would be directly involved with and affected by the NOI's requirements, and we know the local conditions here. Mayor Ladner and councilors, you have received numerous emails and calls from local residents, as is appropriate in a democratic society, voicing their, their opposition to this NOI. Their legitimate concerns are based in two critical facts. This NOI is overly complicated and may actually prevent new beekeepers from wanting to, new people from becoming beekeepers, and it cannot be fully enforced, even if the town had great financial and staffing resources. This NOI restricts in-town honeybees to Apis mellifera libustica, commonly called the Italian honeybee, a subspecies of the western honeybee, which is Apis mellifera. Existing data show other subspecies, such as the Carnolian and Caucasian, to be less prone to certain hive diseases, drifting or robbing from other hives, and they're often found to be even gentler than the Italian subspecies, thus suitable to populated areas. This NOI ignores other crucial factors. To start, the various subspecies of the western honeybee are not easily distinguishable, even to experienced beekeepers. Placing a honeybee under a microscope or performing DNA testing would likely be required to identify the subspecies. Further, a virgin queen can fly up to twenty miles to mate, and she can mate with up to twenty drones, which are the males, which may comprise different subspecies. So hear me, the drones that she's mating with, they may be different subspecies. Short of artificial insemination, it is not possible to know precisely which subspecies will hatch in the hive. She takes only one mating flight in her life, and then remains sheltered in the hive for up to five years unless she is replaced. This superseding NOI does not acknowledge the important service beekeepers provide in removing feral honeybees. Experienced beekeepers generously rescue swarms and remove infestations, usually for free, but they cannot identify the honeybee subspecies that they're rescuing. If all the rescued honeybees were moved to rural areas, the town's population of gentle western honeybee colonies may be reduced significantly, which would allow more space for feral hives to come in. Regardless of subspecies, honeybees can fly up to five miles to forage, so bees residing in API's just beyond the town limits can still fly into town for foraging if their nutritional needs are not being met in their out-of-town locations. This NOI requires continuous access to water source near the hive, which is good. However, bird baths are not problematic, because birds and bees can easily share this water source without conflict. Worker bees will also find other water sources such as hose bibs, faucets, puddles, or other standing or dripping water. It is not possible to prevent bees from taking advantage of a dripping hose bib on a neighbor's property. Water collecting is part of their necessary foraging work, during which time they are routinely gentle and focused only on collecting water. Recleaning every two years, as this NOI requires, may not prevent agitated behavior or swarming. A skilled, observant beekeeper will check the hive sufficiently often and make the necessary adjustments to ensure continued gentleness and to prevent swarming. This NOI employs a punitive tone, referencing section one dash nine of the municipal code and stating that, quote, "The occurrence of honeybees from a beekeeper's API with the normal use of neighboring properties shall be considered as a public nuisance, with all the civic, civil, and criminal remedies available to the town." Further, a beekeeper who fails to keep his or her bees reined in could be fined and subject to imprisonment? Does this NOI reflect actions of an enlightened community that prides itself for progressive decisions, promotion of education to reduce civil disruption, and protection of the natural environment? We can do much better than this, and we should. Beekeepers tend to appreciate the wonders of nature and be interested in the science of beekeeping. Generally, they're calm by temperament. They need to be when working with a hive. The relationship between the beekeeper and bees is almost mystical. If we're open, we can learn much from bee behavior, which demonstrates societal traits we humans would do well to emulate, such as interdependence and cooperation, serious work ethic, division of labor, and producing only products beneficial to society. So with your permission, I'll thank you for my part, and I'll hand the rest over to Susan Campbell.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Susan Campbell, and as advertised, I will finish out by sharing the rest of Susan Claire's statement. At the August fourteenth town council meeting, Councilor Ray mentioned the benefits of beekeeping to military veterans. A website called Old Hives Tale discusses the aftereffects of World War I, in which U.S. soldiers experienced traumatic injuries on a scale reminiscent of the Civil War. Many suffered from what was referred to as shell shock. The government did not ignore these psychically damaged shelters, but looked for a fulfilling occupation for them. Beekeeping was considered a viable alternative because the beekeeper often works alone at a slower pace and contributes to society through products from the hive. Thus, the U.S. government created a task force to help returning veterans learn beekeeping. In nineteen eighty, wartime psychic trauma was relabeled as post-traumatic stress disorder. Nationwide, veterans and others challenged with PTSD are finding healing benefits through calming interactions with honeybees. Honeybees can heal us in other ways, too. Through their medicinally and nutritionally potent honey, through apathy therapy, which is the intentional stinging applied for joint issues, and through ingesting propolis, a mixed resin composed of beeswax, saliva, sap, and various local botanicals. Like honey, propolis is an antibacterial and offers other benefits too numerous to mention here. Other sections of the NOI are questionable, but limited time prevents further discussion. If councilors still feel compelled to implement the beekeeping ordinance, I recommend that the town first perform a transparent study to assess current conditions, the actual need for an ordinance, long-term impacts, community sentiment, and other verifiable data. If results so indicate, a more informed enforceable ordinance could be developed. This will be accomplished in collaboration with Grant County Beekeepers, who routinely teach best practices of beekeeping, which include being a good neighbor, providing water, regular hive checks for diseases and other unwanted conditions, helping other beekeepers, and removing hives that have become, for whatever reason, no longer urban quality. It should be noted that this NOI, even had it been previously implemented, would not have prevented the August fifth incident in which two people in the dog park were stung. One of the most disheartening aspects of this NOI process has been the adversarial feelings it has engendered, from a harsh starting position based in fear and control, in addition to misrepresenting the actual intent of the original NOI, rather than from a positive approach incorporating widespread accurate education and gratitude for these amazing fuzzy little creatures that do so much for us and for our natural environment. creatures that do so much for us and for our natural environment. In closing, here's a short quote attributed to Bray Buffalo of the Standing Rock Reservation during the 19th century, which seems appropriate. "I have noticed in my life that all men have a liking for some special animal, tree, plant, or spot on earth. If men would pay more attention to these preferences and seek what is best to do in order to make themselves worthy of that toward which they are so attracted, they might have dreams which would purify their lives. Let a man decide upon his favorite animal and make a study of it, learning its innocent ways. Let him learn to understand its sound emotions. The animals want to communicate with man, but Wakantanka, the creator, does not intend they shall do so directly. Man must do the greater part in securing an understanding." Thank you.
Thank you. How many wish to speak to the bee issue tonight? Let me hit a count. Okay, well, I'll go ahead on my list, and please be as short and concise as you can, and we don't need to repeat what's been said before, but please do your best to get your message across. And I won't put a timeline on it unless we start going over, but I want you to keep it as short as possible, several minutes. We will have time. Next on my list was Ken Sexton.
Hi, I'm Ken Sexton. I just have a few comments to make. I do not have a written statement, just some notes. I'm a beekeeper, a member of the Grant County Beekeepers. It was suggested that I make it clear that I'm a retired environmental research professor. I graduated from the School of Public Health. The reason this is important is because in our training, we are trained to assess problems, list problems that should be addressed, and I helped teach a course called Environmental Priorities, and given that the school I was in, environmental priorities were considered part of public health. So in the course, we would list, and I'm addressing practical issues of this ordinance, we would list issues that we consider were a risk, that proposed a risk to the public, and then we would try to rank those, and we would get students to describe what resources would be needed, what policies should be enacted that would benefit in some way the public. And one of the important questions is that we ask the students is, tell us what you would measure, what you would monitor, so that you could judge how effective your policies and your regulations are. So when you're trying to minimize the risk of something like car accidents, drunk and driving, we've heard tonight about policies that can reduce the risk of fire in homes, reduce deaths, injuries, you can start collecting data that you can suggest that we have a record of accidents, a record of fires before this new policy, that after the policy is enacted, we'll monitor, you know, the decrease in accidents and fires. And that seems very straightforward, and that's what we ask for. So in those two cases, you don't have to wait too long. You don't have to collect data very long to figure out whether your policies are effective or not. The problem with trying to come up with policies that can prevent a serious attack, like we experienced in the Dog Park, is that you may have to wait years for another event. And in order to get enough data to determine if that one incident's actually decreased, how long do you have? The question comes up, with rare, very rare events, how long do you have to wait before you're convinced the policy benefited anybody at all? So then the question is, is it worth investing that amount of resources, of time, accounting, registering, signage, enforcement? So that's the issue I want. It's a practical concern. I'm against the occurrence of superseding NOI because it can't be enforced, it can't be judged to be effective or not. Thank you.
Thank you. Teresa Murphy.
I was at the project meeting when the discussion about the bees was brought up, and I assumed that the Grant County bee people would be working with Linda to make some suggestions on how to have this go forward. And since this does affect the Grant County bee people, I think they should be included in making these decisions. That's all I really have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine Sanders.
Hi. I'm not an eloquent speaker, and I didn't prepare any notes, which probably would have been smart.
Could you just pull the microphone?
Yes, I'm also short. So I wouldn't prepare any statements. I'm here, and I would really encourage that there be a no vote on this ordinance, and I know that Linda has preferred that we, as the public, shaped the ordinance to be more in line with what she's hoping for, but in my own mind, this would be a discouragement to any potential beekeepers up and coming. I think it's a negative mark on our community, which we are nature-friendly, as we're at the base of the wilderness, and this is something we're very connected to. I know that our community has been making movement towards being more friendly towards bees, and I think that this is a big step backwards. I know I asked at the public comment meeting how this ordinance would have prevented the incidents that happened, and I was told that it would not have. So in my own mind, this is, it's a regulation for the sake of regulation, and that it's not addressing an actual problem, nor would it have prevented it. So what it's doing is creating a new burden for our community on both the public end and the enforcement end, and I see that as a major concern. So that's really all I have. So thank you.
Thank you. Terri Timm.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. Terri Timmy, Southwestern Mexico-Autobahn and citizen of Silver City. At the last council meeting where the first NOI came out, I stood up opposing the NOI on behalf of Southwestern Mexico-Autobahn because of the, the tone of that banning beekeeping and how it basically demised bees. And I'd like to acknowledge that Councilor Ayman Smith has toned it down somewhat, and I certainly appreciate her comments about how the town has worked towards making Silver City bird, butterfly, and bee friendly. However, Autobahn is still opposed to this superseding NOI because we feel that it still does not do enough to, not to make beekeeping a respectable province of people in Silver City. By making people who are found to be a public nuisance, subject to a municipal offense and fined amount of not more than $500, or subject to imprisonment for not more than 90 days for maybe not keeping notes about when they last checked their hives or something like that, as this ordinance seems to imply, certainly does not go very far to making beekeeping part of the culture of Silver City. Reading through this ordinance, you know, there are many more pages dedicated to beekeeping and regulating beekeeping than there are to people keeping dogs, which in many cases are a much greater public health hazard than are bees ever are. Also, you know, we find that this is simply a case of bureaucratic overreach. You know, the ordinance is written in such detail that hardly anybody could maintain a beehive and meet with the ordinance's regulations. Therefore, we urge you to vote no on this superseding NOI and start over. Thank you.
Thank you. George Corr.
I too would like to thank the council for giving me a chance to speak here tonight. Apparently, I'm the only guy in the room that's in favor of this ordinance. I am. The good news is, I'm also the shortest guy in the room. I represent the general public, a population that includes people who are susceptible to severe allergic reactions to bee stings. There are two such people in my over 55 condominium community. I'm likely to be one of those kinds of people as well. We deserve some kind of protection. This ordinance, from my point of view, I agree with Councilor Ayman Smith that this ordinance is in line with ordinances all over the country. Basically, from my point of view, what it does is simply encourage beekeepers to reach the minimum standard of care of a reasonably prudent operator of a beehive. That standard of care applies to the beekeepers in Silver City whether or not they like it, whether or not there's an ordinance. If anything, this ordinance serves their interest by creating documentary evidence that they're trying to maintain their bees in compliance with the standard of care. I was a lawyer for 43 years in Florida, and I, my entire career was dedicated primarily to personal injury suits. And all I can say is, I don't understand why it is that beekeepers object to the regulatory scheme that's involved here. Apparently, from my point of view, they're arguing for the right to operate hives without compliance with the generally accepted standard of care of reasonable beehive operator. That makes no sense to me. Among the comments that have been made here tonight, one of them is, there are inadequate resources in the town of Silver City to effectively police all of the beehives. And with that, with that particular assertion, I agree, there aren't. And because of that, there's one significant oversight in this ordinance which needs to be addressed. There is no requirement imposed on the operator of a registered hive to have a minimum level of insurance that protects anybody that suffers a severe injury as a result of a bee sting. If we don't have the cops to go around and effectively police all of the hives, then there should at least be a requirement that people who engage in this dangerous occupation have effective insurance that will cover a loss. The fact of the matter is that the experience of beekeepers around the country indicate that when there is a severe loss of the legal of a negligent operator, operation of a hive, the insurance companies will deny coverage. And if they're unsuccessful in trying to deny the coverage that exists on a regular homeowner's policy, they will cancel that policy, making it virtually impossible for a negligently operating beehive operator to get insurance again. At a minimum, there should be a requirement that there is a certificate of insurance that up to $1 million in liability coverage that specifically applies to this particular operation. Otherwise, people who are susceptible to a severe injury will be without recourse. Insofar as you're talking about the difficulty with making sure that the bees will actually be, have the DNA composition showing that they're less aggressive and less harmful, that merely underscores the need for some kind of insurance. In addition to that, it underscores the need for the requirement that's in this ordinance that the less aggressive European and Western honeybees be purchased by hive operators, and that there be a requirement that the beekeepers maintain receipts showing that they have at least tried to establish a hive which does not contain the dangerous bees. And finally, to the extent that there's a desire on the part of the beekeeping community to look at the data reflecting the dangerous qualities of hive operation, the data is already there. It's insurance actuarial information related to this particular activity, and I recommend that the council look at that. The fact that insurance companies are so anxious to die coverage under a regular homeowner's policy speaks very well to the fact that this is a dangerous undertaking. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. That concludes those who signed up. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this issue? Okay, so we will move along, and Councilor Ayman Smith spoke to her reasons for this ordinance, and I'd like to just ask the council if they have any questions or comments from Councilor Ayman Smith. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry.
Actually, well, I, we'll have a comment, but are you going to ask for discussion after the motion as well?
That will be discussion. I'm just asking for questions or comments.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Ayman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve a superseding notice of intent ordinance number 1272, an ordinance amending Chapter 6, Animals, Article 1, and adding new Section 6-15, keeping of honeybees of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of Silver City.
Is there a second?
Mr. Ray, I have a second. The motion is stated.
Councilor Edison. Okay, so, and I would like to, any discussion on the motion? Councilor Canno?
When this NOI, the first NOI came about, I'd like to make it very clear that I voted for it because I wanted there to be public comments. My own personal thought that day was, this is ridiculous. And I felt like I needed 30 days at least to find out what the community thought. And I have to tell you, 98% of the people that I've talked to, and that's a very large amount of the community, has thought the same way. In the past 30 days or so, I've learned a whole lot about bees, and I appreciate those of you that have educated me, because I didn't know a lot of things that, you know, I just took away from biology class, and that's why I knew bees were important. The community, for the most part, has told me that this is not something that you want, and because of that, tonight I will be voting no on the NOI, and should it pass, I will vote no on the ordinance. Thank you.
Councilor Ray.
Thank you, Mayor. I had numerous meetings with some of the bee people, and numerous conversations, emails, telephone calls. I went to some of the places and I talked to them, and I also do not believe in this ordinance, and I will vote no on it. And I will vote no on it because one of the things that we have here in America is that they give us freedom to have things, to enjoy our quality of life. It's true. Once we start giving up some of these rights, what's to hold them back from taking a lot more rights from us? And I appreciate you guys for being here. It was very interesting, and I also will vote no on it. Thank you.
Councilor Edison, any comments?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank everyone that has sent me emails, who's called, and who has stopped me, and for all of you that have spoken here today. I will support this going forward for further discussion, because I think that this is not a final vote on the ordinance at this point. I don't make any projections on what will come out, if it does come forward in a different form, if things are adjusted, so I'm not going to state now how I might vote in the future. But for me, I think it's really important to have the discussion with some of the items that have been brought up, and I do think that this is something that we need to look at. We do regulate a number of different sorts of animals within the Town of Silver City, and I'm not saying that this is necessarily- And I'm not saying that this is necessarily, this is not a done deal. Remember, this is a notice of intent. It may not ever come back in the form that you see it here right now. So I think that for further discussion, that's where I'm going to go, so I'm going to support it because I do believe in further discussion about any matter that comes before the Council. And I want to just continue that practice, so thank you.
Councilwoman Amon Smith.
I just have one comment, and that is that a notice of intent has a lot of language that doesn't end up in the actual ordinance. So the actual ordinance, like, won't be four pages. It will probably be very similar to the chicken ordinance, or some of the other stuff that is a very small amount. I want to say that the permit with the requirements fits on one page, and according to our town staff are completely enforceable. You know, one of the things the USDA does is it identifies both bees and chickens as livestock. And I got an email today from a citizen who said, there's an ordinance on chickens. Why not on something like bees that can be deadly to him? So there's a danger of being stung that I think really needs to be addressed. And yes, bees are out there in the wild. We can't regulate bees, but we can ask for cooperation from beekeepers. So that's where I am. And yet, let me say, this is an NOI. It's not a done deal.
Councilwoman Ray.
I have one more thing, and no, no unintended to anybody, but the majority of people here throughout this area here have all said no. So why are we going to spend more time when the majority of people say no, and I'm going to say no? I think it's just a waste of time. A waste of time of the Council, a waste of time of the people. Just a waste of time. I still am saying no. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, or? Anne, I'd like to do a roll call, please.
Councilwoman Edison.
Hi.
Councilwoman Amon Smith.
Hi.
Councilwoman Ray.
No.
Councilwoman Canno.
May.
Thank you. We have a tie, tie vote. And I too have been thinking about this a lot, and I've been reading a lot. I lived in Silver City for 32 years, and this is the first case that I'm aware of where a swarm of bees has attacked a passerby. That's not any reason not to do anything because it does present a possibility. And I can understand Councilwoman Linda Amon Smith's interest in wanting to somehow do something about this. I mean, if you read the, if you read part of the city's territorial charter and its municipal code, we are charged with passing ordinances designed to promote the general welfare, protect public safety, and regulate certain activities within the town. So from that standpoint, I do think it's important that we know where these hives are, because there are some people that are allergic, and, and I know there's some criticism about having a sign by your property, but from a passerby standpoint, if someone is using that route to go for a walk every day, and they see this sign, which is very non-threatening and is really friendly looking, says honeybees at work here, I think that could be useful to the common citizen that's walking up and down the street and someone who may be allergic to bees. About a month ago, I was working in my front yard, and unbeknownst to me, a small colony, or whatever you want to call it, of hornets had moved into a crack in the rock wall. And I was unaware of that, and so I was whacking weeds, and out of nowhere came this hornet, hit me on the arm. And my arm, over a period of two days, turned blood red and swelled up, and for another week, was red and itching quite a bit. So there's no control in some instances over Mother Nature. Things happen because nature is supposed to be wild, and there can be instances like And I've also heard, you know, that in the case of this one instance, that an ordinance might not have even prevented what happened from happening. I spoke to a man in, in Phoenix, and for 17 years, he was in the business of transporting colonies of bees all around southern Arizona and California for the purpose of pollinating the different crops. And over those 17 years, over at one time or another, he had between 5,000 and 8,000 hives. And so he's had lots of opportunities to study bees and to look at behavior and so on, and they've done a lot of statistical work, and they've discovered that if you look at a bell curve, that 10% of bees are just docile and very none, none aggressive. Another 10% on the other end of the bell curve are aggressive, and in the middle are bees that kind of act like bees. You know, they, they're not aggressive, and they're not totally docile, but if you mess with them in the wrong way, they will sting you, otherwise they leave you alone. He was surprised to learn that we were looking at only one species of bees because there are many other species that are just as docile as the ones that are proposed in this ordinance. And he listed a whole list of them, and I, I'm not going to try to read those names. But he, he also said that as long as he's been in the business, he can't look at a bee and tell what the species of bee is. You've got so much variation within a species. You can have large ones and small ones, and even genetic testing is not totally conclusive in some cases because of all the, all the subspecies that gets mixed in. He also said that, now, this is just one person, I will admit that. He also said that there's been studies that seem to indicate that having a diversification of species is important to maintain the health of the bee population, just like diversification of species in any, in any group, whether it be mammals or, or whatever. So, and looking at this ordinance, from our personal standpoint, if this were the final version of the ordinance, I would not support it for the following reasons. I think it's too restrictive, and I don't think it's totally enforceable. One of the things we brought up when we were looking at the side-by-sides and voters against it was that it wasn't enforceable. And to me, this is, this is an important point. Now, again, this is personal opinion. In looking at the ordinance, there are a number of things that I would like to see changed. For example, the registration process, to me, seems pretty intimidating with all of the ramifications of if somehow you violate it, because in, in some cases, you may be in violation without even knowing it because you don't have control over where those bees are going and, and what sort of intermixing with other subspecies is taking place. I don't, I don't like the idea that someone can just come on your property without prior notice or without setting up an appointment to make an inspection. To me, the animal control officer doesn't have the expertise or the science background to analyze a hive and determine what the status of that colony is. To me, the, the Grand County beekeepers are in a much better position to determine the health and the activity of a hive and what the status of that hive is. So there's lots of other issues in here that I have problems with, and I'm not going to go through all of them, but I'm simply gonna, and I guess one other thing I did talk to this beekeeper in, in Phoenix about, there's a fly barrier, and he, he sort of scoffed at that, and said that wouldn't really make a difference if a bee hive swarmed. So in conclusion, what I would like to see is, and one of the things when I ran for mayor is I said, what I like to do is to get people to work together for a common goal and for the common good. And on, for the, on behalf of the Silver City, I, I do think we need some sort of a process to keep track of where the bees are. And, and, and I, and the idea that you limit the number of hives in a particular area, I mean, someone, and I don't know, someone who raises bees might not even look at it this way, but they could have four or five hives within a small area, which would be a big danger to the neighbors, I think. So what I would like to see is, I would like to see the city work together with the Grand County beekeepers to come up with a process that's going to work for everybody. That's my own personal belief at this time, and, so I will vote yes for this ordinance, to move it forward. I want to see what comes out of it. I want to see if we can have the ability to work together in cooperation for the common good of the city, for the common good of our citizens, and for the common good of our bee, beekeepers. I think it's possible, and I'd like to see it go, so I will vote yes. So the motion carries. Next on the agenda, and unfinished business, is 12B, the approval slash disapproval of amending resolution number 2018 dash 24, adopted September 11, 2018, for the participation in capital outlay program administered by the New Mexico Department of Transportation to construct sidewalk and ADA improvements on Market Street from Bullard West to Peños Alto Street. Alex, would you present the details of this?
Mayor, at the last council meeting, we, this resolution was presented as it currently is, with listing the Market Street area as the area where the, the construction was going to happen. As I explained at the last council meeting, under normal, previous circumstances, I guess I should say, is that the, the contracts always came with the description of, of the project area, which the current agreement does not. Originally, the town requested funding for sidewalk work on Cactus Street. And, and so that's why I requested that we remove the project description area from the resolution last night, because I wanted to be able to look at and, and apply the project to the area that is most needed. Well, I went back after the council meeting, after we had just amended it, and Peter told me that the state changed their process, and they required that we put the project description in the resolution. So Peter and I went back and looked at the two project areas that we were looking at, the Cactus Street area and the Market Street area. Market Street, we, I believe, two, last year or two years ago, we got a legislative allocation to do sidewalk, and in that contract, it did list specifically the Market Street area. Again, this one did it. But as we started doing that project, working on it, we got money for plan, design, and construction. Because of the historical nature of the project area on Market Street, the engineering services more than doubled. So originally, it was going to cost us about $30,000, $35,000 to plan, design of that project area. It ended up costing more like $75,000 to do, do the design and, and construction. I mean, plan and design in that, of that one small area. We ended up going ahead and just using all of these original $120,000 from that legislative allocation solely to do project design for the Market Street area because the money wasn't going to go very far for construction. We also went back and looked at the Cactus area project, and as you know, we've already done construction up there, or once. And so we looked at the project area and the amount of design that's already been done in that project. To do the $100,000 project that we're looking at, we would have needed about another $30,000 in design to do construction. So that would have meant we would have had to come up with $30,000 and got $70,000 worth of construction if we went with the Cactus Street area. Or if we go back and look at, apply this project to the Market Street, we would get $100,000 worth of construction on Market Street. But at the same time, because I did identify $30,000 that we would have been able to use for design of the Cactus Street project, and rather than apply it to design, because we've already got part of that project designed, we would rather go ahead and use the $30,000 that I came up with for construction rather than design. And so if we go this route, we would get $130,000 worth of construction rather than $70,000 worth of construction and $30,000 worth of design. So it's, with that, I'm recommending that we amend the resolution and get the bigger bang for our buck and actual results on the street with construction money and go this route.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Does the Council have any questions or comments? Do I hear a motion? Councilwoman Ray.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve amending resolution number 2018 dash 24, adopted September 11, 2018, for the participation in capital outlay program administered by the New Mexico Department of Transportation to construct sidewalk and ADA improvements on Market Street from Bullard Street West to Peños Alto Street.
Thank you. Do I hear a second? Councilor Canno?
I'll take a quick pause, Steve.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Councilwoman Edison.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a brief comment. I think this is great that we're going to get bigger bang for our buck with doing $130,000 worth of construction on two streets rather than limiting the amount of money. So this is, appreciate the explanation that you gave tonight, and that folks will know on both streets that they're going to be getting sidewalk and ADA improvements in certain areas, so thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please, Anne.
Councilwoman Canno.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ray.
Aye.
Councilwoman Amon Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Edison.
Aye.
Motion carries. Request a short break. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, any question or short break, please?
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Home in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll take a short, short break, okay? Call on me back to order. If you have happened to look up here and, and seen some of us shaking, it's not for fear of you, it's because it's darn cold up here. I don't know how it is down there.
It's not, it's not. It's nice.
No, no.
Anne, I've heard the comment that there were parts of this meeting that really stunk. Did you smell the skunk? I don't know where that odor came from, but... I don't know where that odor came from.
I was doing this. My eyes are watering.
And Chief Portillo, thank you for being here tonight.
You're all in with these eyes.
Next item is new business, 11A, is the approval/disapproval of two public celebration permit applications for Little Toad Creek's annual Octo... October Fest, yeah, October Fest. On October 20, 2018, at 200 North Bullard Street, Silver City, New Mexico, with alcohol service from 2:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m., liquor license holder Little Toad Creek LLC, DBA Little Toad Creek Distillery, Number 63013, and DBA Little Toad Creek Brewery, Number 67085, 203 South Mill Road, Silver City, New Mexico. Who is here to make a presentation?
I have a question. Any questions? Do we do?
Alex, or do you want to get into this?
I can answer.
Yeah?
What do we do?
If you have questions, then this application cannot be granted. The part of the application, if you can make a ruling based on the application without asking questions, then you can go ahead. But if you feel that this is an incomplete process, because they are not making themselves available to answer questions and maybe to talk about conditions that might be imposed, then in good conscience, you can vote for it.
I have one. Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I have one question for you, Mrs. Scavron. If it's something that may be addressed because of the process that's done at the town for use of public area, can I ask the question? And if the manager cannot answer it, then... I mean, I feel kind of weird that there's no one here, because I would really... Would rather ask them this question, because they did turn in a request to use the public sidewalk and/or the street, correct? Because I do have a concern about the public sidewalk and ramp.
Is the street?
Okay. I have a concern about access to the ramp and the sidewalk and to their business for handicaps as well.
I don't think you could vote on it. Can you make a condition of the approval?
I don't know, Mrs. Scavron. Is that something that we can do? I mean, the person isn't here to be responsible.
You can continue the hearing. You can continue it and ask them to come back again?
And it's there again, September 20.
Well, the problem is they want it for October 20th, and... Well, there's some... There's a level of responsibility on an applicant, and we shouldn't... My best practice is not to change your form... Your method and procedure for governing when someone just doesn't show up. If they had called and said, "We can't make it. Can you take a... Can I appear by telephone?" We could have said yes. You could have said yes, because counselors can appear in a meeting by telephone. So could the applicant. And did you hear from them that they were going to be here? Because normally, we call them and ask them if they're going to be here.
Well, Teresa is the one that asked for it, for this date, so I expect her to be here.
Yeah, so expect her to be here, though. There could have been a miscommunication.
Well, they've done this for years.
This is quite the separate time they've done this, though. So it's not like it's a new procedure.
This is a pretty big event downtown.
I mean, they should have wanted to be here. They've been here for seven or eight years now.
So the process is... It's bifurcated, because one is that you're permitting a license to be used for the service of alcohol. So that's under state law, we get to say, "Yes, you can do a public celebration." That's one area of approval. That's all you're approving. The second thing that needs approval is to use a public thoroughfare, to use the street. We don't issue... Now, you can issue the... Say, "Okay, you can use the street," but because you're not here to answer questions about the alcohol, we're not going to grant you the permit to use the alcohol. You do it... There's two things that are being ruled upon by the town. One is in the town manager's province, which is use of the street. The second is your province, which is, are you going to allow them to serve alcohol? Now, if you find that there's enough information in the application for you to just say, "Yes, they can serve alcohol," we're looking at it, we see that there's the appropriate number of servers, that there's security, that there's a fence, that there's whatever, you can make that decision. If you want to know whether the permit has been applied for to use the street, you would ask the town manager. Now, I don't know, did they apply to use the street? So there was a permit. Was the application complete, Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir.
And did anyone see anything in the application or whatever that would raise a question in your mind about whether we can actually just go ahead and vote on this? Because I mean, it is on the agenda, so we can vote on it. There's no... I don't think there's any rule that says the person has to be here to make the presentation. Is there, Mr. Brown? There's not a rule, but it's a great disadvantage, because the applicant is supposed to be able to answer questions, even to certify, "Yes, this is my signature. Yes, I filled this out. Yes, I am a representative." And you don't have that. You have an application. I think that in the application itself, if the app... If you believe the application covers all of your concerns regarding alcohol and the security, the licensing, the servers, then I believe you can vote on it. When it comes to the use of the right-of-way, that's Alex's problem. If Alex has no questions of them, well, that takes care of that issue. Well, it's on the agenda, and I don't know of any rule that says a person has to be here to present it. I mean, I don't... I don't really believe it was a blatant not coming, you know? I'm willing to give them benefit of doubt and say, "Maybe they miscommunicated, and Person A thought Person B was going to be here." And I'd like to bring it up for a vote and see where the council goes with it. Let's get it done. Yes. That if Counselor Besson's concerns have to do with access?
Yes.
Then Alex can impose the condition now.
That's what I was going to ask. That's exactly what I was going to say.
So would you be... So your thing would be... He would... Alex would... You would tell Alex what kind of conditions that you want, that you're all comfortable with, and Alex will amend his granting of the permit, so that the permit is conditioned on them following the suggestions of... Or the demands of the council.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry, Mr.?
Mr. Mayor, that actually addresses what I was going to ask, is, you know, because I don't have a problem... This is an event that they have held before. This is an event that's already been advertised. This brings a lot of people to town, and it brings, you know... And it's something that the community really, really enjoys. So my only concern, and I figured that one Counselor Connaught or I would probably address the fact, is there's a handicap ramp there. There's a sidewalk there. And if they are expecting to enable people who are handicapped, that have to use the ramp, to get into establishment for this, that I would prefer that that sidewalk, as we've always talked about with other things, that the sidewalk, we still have public access, because there is no other way to get up there for the handicap.
We had this discussion, and we are... It was very clear that the sidewalk and the ramp and the stairs, any of the access to the public other than that street was going to be... Remain open to the public.
Counselor Connaught, you...
We had that discussion specifically when you talked to me about it. So I can reiterate and reinforce your thought, and make that very clear, and Chief...
If you're comfortable with Alex's amendment, then I'll entertain a motion. Counselor Gray?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve of two public celebration permits applications for Little Toad Creek's annual October Fest on October 20, 2018, at 200 North Bullard Street, Silver City, New Mexico, with alcohol service from 2:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m., liquor license holder Little Toad Creek LLC, DBA Little Toad Creek Distillery, Number 63013, and DBA Little Toad Creek Brewery, Number 67085, 203 South Mill Road, Silver City.
Any discussion? Hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Proposed name, motion carries. Can we, on the application process, have some kind of statement or a signature from them that they acknowledge that someone's going to be here to make the presentation, or we won't deal with it in the future? Your... The state law requires... The state law requires you... Or requires them to seek your approval. The conditions that you grant approval are up to you. Okay. Do y'all feel comfortable with that particular approach? Okay.
I do.
Okay. All right. 11B, the approval/disapproval of a mutual aid agreement for emergency medical transportation services by and between Hiller Regional Medical Center and the Town of Silver City. Mr. Brown or Alex?
James.
James or James?
Mr. Brown.
We're going downhill, quick.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, this is a mutual aid agreement between the Town of Silver City and Hiller Regional Medical Center for the provision of assisting each other in providing ambulance service transport for the occupants of Silver City. Historically, we had had a joint powers agreement in place for 20 years, and that had expired about five or six years ago, and we've been negotiating since then. We're at a point where we've made some concessions, but we don't feel that they're deal breakers. So we're okay with it. It's a one-year agreement. Many, many things have changed in the last six years, and a whole bunch of things have changed in the last 20-some years since the original agreement. So this agreement is more fitting with today's situation, both with the town and our provision of EMS, and the addition of EMS providing standby services when we have large fires to provide care to our firefighters. And the fire chief is here. We've all been in the negotiations on this, and we've all reviewed it. The attorneys reviewed it, and we recommend approval. Did you want that? And the fire chief gives it a two thumbs up.
Any questions from the council? Do I hear a motion? Mr. Mayor, do you have a question?
Oh, that's why you're looking at me. Okay. I move to approve of a mutual aid agreement for emergency medical transportation services by and between Hiller Regional Medical Center and the Town of Silver City.
Is there a second? Counselor Amon Smith?
Mr. Mayor, I have a second. Motion's ready.
Motion's second. Any discussion? Hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Proposed name, motion carries. I know that Mr. Marshall has spent a lot of time, as well as the chief and Mr. Brown, making this work out. Thank you so much. You've done the town good for one year.
Aye. We've had an interesting time doing this, and I already thanked you and mentioned your participation, Mr. Scavron. So this really does pay tribute as well to the new administration at the hospital and working with Daffy to get this done and make sure that we provide the best emergency medical transportation for the citizens and visitors of our town.
Thank you. Next item's 11C, the approval/disapproval of bid Number 18/19-1, Town of Silver City Welcome Signs. Mr. Brown?
The town received four bids for bid 18/19-1, the Town of Silver City Welcome Signs. We received four bids. It's staff's recommendation that we reject all bids. Well, we received three responsive bids and one unresponsive bid. The bid from Rocky Mountain Solutions was unresponsive, because there was a... They used the wrong forms. And they did file the addendum that was issued during the process, so their bid was not up to date based on the new addendum. The other ones were way out of budget, what was available for the construction. So it's staff's recommendation, along with discussions from America that's been spearheading this project, that we return... We reject all bids and sit down with the engineers to come up with a more affordable project and reissue the project out to bid again.
Any questions for Mr. Brown? Counselor Gray?
Thank you. Mr. Brown and Mr. Marshall, this particular... Does it require engineers to do it?
Mr. ... Anytime you deal with anything that happens on state property, state right away. And all these signs are done on state... Right away on the highways. They require they be built to certain standards, so anytime you deal with this type of thing, it jacks up the costs substantially, just meeting requirements that they make us deal with.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion? Counselor Besson?
Mr. Mayor, I move to accept staff's recommendation to reject all bids and rebid the project for the Town of Silver City Welcome Signs.
Do I hear a second? Counselor Gray?
I have a second. Thank you.
Any discussion? Hold in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Proposed name, Marshall carries. The next item, 11D, is the approval/disapproval of a letter regarding environmental impact statement, EIS, for special use airspace optimization at Holloman Air Force Base, New Mexico, in opposition to alternate two. Counselor Amon Smith, would you present the details of this?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to remind the council that on October 24, 2017, almost a year ago, this Silver City Town Council approved the forwarding of two letters regarding Holloman Air Force Base proposed expansion of F-16 training over our area. Those letters expressed mostly grave concerns that our area had been left out of scoping meetings required by the Air Force, and that the two alternatives being considered had only recently come to our knowledge. But it was not actually until months later that we were able to find out who the real decision-makers would be in this process. In November 2017, these chambers here were packed with concerned citizens expressing frustration with the lack of formal scoping meetings. Alan Schaefer, who is the contracted consultant leading the environmental impact statement data gathering, was not very empathetic to the audience. I know, because I was here. He essentially told us all that the scoping meetings were done and that we could address comments on the environmental impact statement website. It wasn't until Alan Schaefer came back on March 18 of this year, 2018, that the public found out clearly who the decision-makers were and what the categories they were really going to be looking at. Thankfully, there's been a great deal of information available after that. On June 12, retired Air Force Colonel Susan Beck provided this council with an update on the Holloman Air Force Base F-16 proposal... on the Harlem Air Force Base F-16 proposal regarding alternative two training over our area. And one of the points that Colonel Beck stressed again and again was that it is up to us as a community to provide the decision-makers in the Air Force information on how their decision could impact our area. She said a number of times, "They don't know what they don't know," and emphasized it was up to us that, to tell them. I'm going to let the folks here know that I've read now a number of the final reports from the Air Force on other EIS reports, and I was pretty appalled at the level of boilerplate language in a number of areas. I'll give you an example. Such reports address a concern about education and children, usually by stating in a paragraph that there are no school buildings under the targeted training area, hence there could be no harm. But as everyone here knows, in our area, there are regular frequent trips of schoolchildren, high school and college students, who go into those areas where the training would be as part of their outdoor curricula, and there's substantive tremendous harm. But unless the Air Force knows about the things we're concerned about, they could just, and would, just use the same boilerplate in their decision-making. And we cannot allow this to happen. We really must listen to Colonel Beck and give the Air Force the information that they do not know they need. So this is a letter that lays out a variety of information in such a way, I hope, I think, that the Air Force decision-makers could know more about how damaging a potential decision could be to our area. So local subject matter experts contributed to this, as well as a large volume of published literature, and I hope that we've all had a chance to look at it, because it goes through many of the dimensions that are in the actual reports that the Air Force publishes, and so we're giving them information that they can use instead of boilerplate language.
Any questions, Mr. Mayor? Amy Smith, comments? Council Vedison?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to ask if the layout of this is based on other sort of things that you've seen, that, you know, there's certain things that come at certain times, and is the order based on responses that you've seen in the past, or that have been done in the past?
It's not laid out in a particular order that these reports are, that I've seen. The reports will go through similar categories, but they, it's not in the same sequence. But it has the same categories...
Okay.
...as ones that they will be looking at. So, you know, that's done in such a way that they will, for example, we talk about socioeconomic impact, right? That's the language they use, and we know based on these data that our area is already considered an economically distressed community, and so could that be made better or worse by their decision? It could only be made worse.
So there's a reason I asked this question, and it's because I did read everything, and I kept waiting for a rip of hearts, and I had so many veterans call me about their concern because they have PTSD, and I was just waiting for when that was going to show up, and I kept wanting it to, to show up earlier. And that, that's, I mean, to me, with the high number of veterans that we have that live in our community, and the concerns that they've expressed to me and, and to other folks, I just, that's why I asked, if there was a particular order to make the impact of the concerns that we have about how this is going to affect our community, not just visitors to our community, but the people that live and work here, that have businesses that take them out into, you know, the Gila wilderness, that, that run different sorts of, you know, programs out there for children. I just, I guess that's why I asked. And if, if it doesn't matter about the order, but that they're going to get it across, then that's fine. It was just something that, for me, I just kept thinking, okay, wait, read it all, there might be a reason for the order. That's all.
You know, one of the things that is of huge concern to me and with the number of folks is the potential of wildfires...
Yes.
...which actually is not very highly up there in their, in their writing. So, um, I, you know, hopefully, this will, this will connect with the dimensions that they're using, and I'll be able to see that we're using the same kind of categories.
Council Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I am, I'm a advocate for the veterans, because it is, it is a bad decision for the veterans.
Oh, yeah.
Especially loud noises. Although, I am for military training, but the way they came about it, the way they did, was wrong. They should have done more research and asked, asked people. Don't just come down here and throw it in Grand County and say, "We're going to do this." There's a right thing to do things and a wrong thing to do things, and there are a lot of veterans here, and especially combat veterans.
Yes.
Grand County is well-known for, for, for combat veterans. Anyway, that's mine.
Thank you, Councilor. I, I saw the data, I mean, there's data here on how many contacts, yeah, and how many are likely suffering from PTSD.
And you want me to drop and say this to you guys, because they don't want to remember things.
I know, yeah, and these are troopers, having these...
Thank you.
Any other comments? I have one comment. For the last couple of years, I've had the opportunity of, of meeting a group of people who participate in a program called Horses and Heroes, and this is a program that starts out in Montana, where a select group of veterans who are afflicted with PTSD, take a while Mustang and over a period of about three months, they bond with that horse and tame it, and then, at some point, they get into the wilderness and they ride 500 miles along the Continental Divide Trail. And a large portion of that is in the Gila National Forest, and that process of being with the horse, being in the wilderness, being in the quietness and the healing power of the wilderness is an important part of that program. Anyway, do, there's no more comments, and do we have a motion? Councilor Amy Smith?
Councilor Ray, would you like to make a motion on this?
Please.
Yeah.
Yeah, please do.
Thank you. I have, I move to approve of a letter regarding the environmental impact statement, EIS, for special use airspace optimization at Harlem Air Force Base, New Mexico, in opposition to alternative two.
Any, is there a second? Councilman Smith?
I'd like to second the motion, thank you.
Propose nay, motion carries. Next item, eleven E, is the approval slash disapproval of a letter urging New Mexico senators to initiate legislative action at the federal level to support the designation of parts of the Gila and San Francisco rivers and their tributaries as wild and scenic. Councilor Connaught?
Thank you, Mayor. 2018 is the 50th anniversary of the Wild and Scenic Rivers Act, which is legislation that provides maximum forms of protection to designated rivers and their tributaries. In southern New Mexico, we don't have any rivers that have been designated as, as of yet. Senators Heinrich and Udall have both been working towards getting part of the Gila River, the San Francisco River, and some of the tributaries in the Gila National Forest designated as wild and scenic rivers. This would be really important to us, as far as, I mean, clearly, we want to protect the Gila in any way we possibly can, and also, it helps with outdoor recreation. It provides a lot of opportunities for economic development as well, and it's just a solidly good thing to do, in my opinion. I know that myself and Councilor Ray attended a New Mexico Outdoor Conference several months ago, and through that, we've been working with Senator Steinborn and Representative Small from Las Cruces to, to do some of this work to support this personally, and so it's nice to see this now at the council level. The other person who's been working on this with us, meeting with us a lot, is Nathan Newcomer, and he's here this evening, and he may have something else that he wants to add, so if you're willing to do that.
I know you, Nathan.
Thanks for waiting.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and I can have town councilors thinking through your patience, and I'll make my comments briefly. I just want to submit to the record a list of organizational support and business owners that support the introduction for legislation for wild and scenic. Here in Grant County, we've got Gila Backcountry Services, UTL Outfitters up in Catherine County, Vet Voice Foundation, Gila Chaper Backcountry Horsemen of New Mexico, Gila Rio Grand Chaper Trout Unlimited, New Mexico Wildlife Federation, Trout Unlimited Mexico Council, Wild Turkey Horsemen's Associations, and numerous other businesses, farmers, private property owners, and conservationists throughout Grant County and throughout the city of New Mexico. So I just wish I could submit this to the record from the town council to look at.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilor Connaught?
Senator, I move to approve a letter urging New Mexico senators to initiate legislative action at the federal level to support the designation of parts of the Gila and San Francisco rivers and their tributaries as wild and scenic.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councilor Ray?
Thank you. I'll second that.
Hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose nay, motion carries. This concludes the business of the Town of Silver City. Do I hear a motion? Councilman Smith?
I move to adjourn, but I hope that one of the last scientists will go.
All in favor?
Aye.
Wait, wait.
You have a second. Oh, I thought you said you didn't. I thought, to be over here with...
Did you go ahead? You have a second, so. Hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose nay, motion carries.